Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome everyone to tonight's special board meeting. As was advertised, I guess we're not necessarily taking any action tonight, but it is more of a work session, catch us up to speed on how we got here, where we're at for the secondary space solution. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Wolfert of Bray Architect. Ask you, Matt, to please introduce your team and then give us your presentation.
Great, thank you, good to be back this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to share an updated and enhanced version of the solution exploration, which has been ongoing since we were here last. With me this evening is Mike Hacker, Associate Architect with Bray Architects, and Steve Kuhn, Principal and also Registered Architect with Bray. In addition, this evening, we have Randy All, the President of Fredrickson Engineering on the far left. Randy's an HVAC engineer and has been involved with evaluating the existing high school and middle school, and has been a part of the team that has built the budgets around the HVAC scope of work. So, the books you have before you this evening, and you received, I believe, previously, we tried to summarize a lot of the effort that has been done over the past few weeks in preparation. I apologize, it's going to be harder for me to look this way with the mic on that side, I will try, in preparation for tonight's meeting. So hopefully you've had a chance to give a look, I'll do a brief summary now, if you have questions, feel free, otherwise we'll obviously spend as much time as we need to talking through them.
And Matt, before you start your presentation, I just want to make clear that after Matt's done with his presentation, then we're going to invite public comment, if you want to make comment about this issue, then please come up to Tim Miner, and then we will get a list going, we'll have people come up. Then, after verbal comments period is done, and everyone's had their chance to say their piece, then we will be going into a work session where we're going to, the board will be discussing this with the Bray and the engineer. And during that time, then, public can submit written questions on postcards during the course of the meeting if they're so inclined, all right? So anyway, I just wanted to make sure folks were aware that they'll have the chance to speak after you guys make your presentation.
Sounds great. So, tab one of the book is a summary of meeting minutes. So, members of the district's leadership team, along with Steve and myself, met with members of the City of Hudson Planning and Development staff to help get a better understanding of any expectations they would have related to the middle school and high school project. Generally, the meeting was very positive, I think the goal with the meeting was to reintroduce them to the project, many of them had participated in the survey piece of the process, so they were familiar with what the district was considering. And so we learned a little bit more about any expectations they would have related to stormwater, utility availability, infrastructure, street-related improvements, and so we got a better understanding, that is always an area regardless of the municipality, is that final coordination. As you can imagine, some, the engineering side of their world has a tough time when we say conceptually, here's what we're going to do, they like specifics on what we're going to do, so it's a little tougher than to say, yes, we absolutely agree. But I think the meeting was really positive, it was productive, we learned a lot about the process that they would like to see us go through post-successful referendum and the detailed implementation. The civil engineering consultant was also involved in that meeting, and so they're aware as they work to build the budgets on what expectations the city would have. So if you have any questions there, we'd be happy to answer them as we move through tonight's meeting. Tab two of the book is conceptual site and floor plans for the middle school. So this should look relatively familiar, the concept is to look at an addition, I'll say on kind of the south side of the building, it would enclosing, it would enclose a connection from the cafeteria, I'm sorry, the commons, I'll say the carpeted gym for those of you that are familiar with that area, a connection from there over to the admin side. So in site, in site plan, the main objective was to avoid the slope and topography that falls off as you go from the building down towards the athletic field, and also make sure that we could maintain an access drive around the building for emergency vehicle access, which this does do. In floor plan, we're looking at a two-story addition that contains a house on the first floor and a house on the second floor, so really sticking and staying true to the middle school house concept, which is so well-received and does such a great job educating your students here in Hudson. So it's a house on the first floor and a house on the second floor, along with a gymnasium. The connections would occur through a family and consumer ed storage room on the second floor, and an art storage room on the second floor, so really trying to make sure that circulation works for students, that they can move in and out of the building. Elevator access would be from the existing elevator into this space, and where we've taken storage away, we've replaced it in locations within the new addition. So, we're altering, but we're not taking away the storage that we will be using. So we think it's a really straightforward, clean plan, works really well, sticks with the house concept, provides the gym space, which is necessary in reviewing this with the district's leadership team, and think does a really nice job in avoiding significant investment in site infrastructure, because we were able to avoid the slope, the area of the site, and the existing access drive. Moving to the budget, so there's a fair amount of detail here, if you have questions on it, I'll skim through, we've obviously broken this apart into site improvements, so worked with Rettler Corporation, Civil Engineering and Landscape Architecture Consultant who's working with us on the project, to look at the scope of work there. Really, this is excavation for the building, restoration of the site when we're done doing the construction. Just doing construction of this type will damage the site, we're going to most likely have to rebuild a section of that emergency access drive when we're done, just because of construction traffic and other things that are occurring there. So those components are included in this section. The addition, relatively straightforward, this is going to be new construction, two-story, along with the gym, as I described. We have broken out specialty equipment and casework, so cabinetry in classrooms, specialty equipment related to a gym, such as basketball hoops, wood flooring, things of that nature. Renovation is really handling those two small links at both floors, so there's a single link of renovation through the existing office and student services area on the west side of the plan, and then there's two renovation links for corridors on the second floor, as I said earlier, one through the family and consumer ed storage room, and one through the art storage room. You'll see, and this will be a bit repetitive when we get to the high school, although much more lengthy in terms of detail, the soft cost section, this is really looking at all of the non-direct construction costs that are required to complete a project of this complexity. So this includes contingencies, architectural engineering fees, a building permit cost, those are city costs, so we were able to uncover exactly how we were going to be charged as a district for the building permit from the city, so those are built into this area. There's an allowance for furniture and equipment, so tables, desks, chairs, collaboration furniture, things like that, within the resource spaces in the houses. There's plan approval fees, stormwater, site permitting, and I won't go through on everyone in detail, I'd be happy to answer questions about the specific line items if you'd like, but in general, those are the non-direct construction costs that are necessary to construct a project, along with contingencies. So the next piece we also want to look at is schedule, and again, as I think as I've told you before, this has draft and preliminary, a bit on purpose, we need feedback on this, we may be able to accelerate this a bit depending on final scope. But the big picture thought is to, if a referendum is either first proposed and second approved by the community, we would design this project from April through November timeframe, or October, we would bid the project in November, award in December, which would allow for commencement of construction as soon as we can in the spring of twenty sixteen, seventeen, sorry, and completion would be at the spring, or Christmas break, holiday break time in December of 2017, with full closeout in January of 2018. So this one, while important to get done as soon as possible, the fact that we're not changing grade configurations or taking classes away, it's a little less critical that it hits on an exact break in the school year or the calendar year. Like I said, we probably could accelerate this a bit, but I think it's important that we don't rush the design timeframe too long, or also to commit that we're going to be in at a given time if the construction does take a little longer. So, we think this is a good schedule, and would be appropriate for a project of this size. The next piece we're going to look at is the high school. We've done a fair amount of work, working with the district's leadership team and the facilities team. The image in your books is probably a little easier to differentiate the colors on, potentially, than up on the screen, but the blue areas, and I'll kind of generally say the sections shown here, and then reaching all the way back through here with the exception of the gym, and then the section through here, are slated for full replacement. So this would be a remove the roof membrane, remove, if not replace, all of the insulation underneath there if need be, and put a new roof back in its place. The one section highlighted in the yellowish tone here is really looking at fixing some challenges related to flashings and roof edge conditions that the district is dealing with, so it's in the budget, but it's not a full replacement project. So this was intended to show scope on which sections of roof would be needed. The question may be why not all the roofs, and I think we really worked with Jim and the team on the facility side, he said those are good roofs. The roofs that are not shown right now are in good condition, they've got time left on their warranty, and in his opinion, were not necessary to replace at this time. The next piece is HVAC, and again, there's a lot here, we wanted to really get into this, so what we did is we spent a day with our engineers onsite, so we had a plumbing designer, electrical engineer, and then Randy on the HVAC side, spent a day in the high school, and some time over at the middle school, confirming what we knew from previous reports that were done in evaluating those systems, but more importantly, starting to evaluate in a bit of specificity what scope and type of system we would be proposing to go back in in some of these renovated areas. So you can see the colors and the numbers correlate to the plan, there's a lot of different existing systems that you do have in place. Some of those, we would be looking at replacing with a similar type of system, but in a modern application. Others, we would be looking at changing to a different system completely, that we think is a better system for the long run. But again, you'll see here that just about every square foot of this building would be touched in some manner on the HVAC side, from something as simple as the auditorium, kitchen area, having systems that are in good working condition, but don't have digital controls that work with the rest of the building, so a digital controls upgrade to a full HVAC replacement project with new systems, potentially new ductwork, new supply. This does include a new boiler plant and a new chiller plant. So if there's detailed questions, Randy's here and be happy to field them, but I think this was a good way, and we thought it was critically important to show as much as we could graphically, the different levels and different types of HVAC systems that would be needed to bring the building up to speed. So again, two floors of that plan for HVAC. The next tab, tab seven of your handout, is site plans, and there's intentionally a couple of site plans here, we don't know where we're going to go, there's different scenarios. So what you, the first sheet in this section is really a site plan that would not include an investment in athletics. So this plan would be a base high school plan, where we would be constructing the majority of the addition to the south of the existing building within a section of parking lot. We'd be replacing that parking in the northeast side of the site, so we'd be taking what is green space now, constructing parking out of that, and then, when the whole project is done, and we'll get to that at the end, kind of the phasing scenario for this, we would be replacing that green space in the southwest corner of the site. So each of these sites you see, as we go through these three, has the target of 1,000 parking spaces in mind. You will see, something maybe looks a little odd here, why this triangle of grass in this little parking lot, you'll see as we get to the next one, that's theoretically where four tennis courts could go. So we tried to make this, as much as we could, phaseable. So, if the community says, and the board says, yes, we'd like to go ahead with the base high school plan, but not the outdoor athletic piece at this time, as much as we could, we tried to keep the site design so that it could accommodate that project for bringing some of the outdoor athletics and rec to the site in the future if you wanted to. So this would be, to a certain extent, a base project site plan, existing tennis remaining and parking as shown. There's two concepts that look at bringing the outdoor athletic and rec piece to the site, so this is a concept that looks at, we'll look at the biggest piece first and then kind of work our way in. This would look at a stadium in the southwest corner of the site, so a multipurpose stadium, football and soccer on a synthetic turf field within a track, bleachers on both sides, an outdoor support building with some toilets concession and a bit of storage included in it. Again, parking to support the building and the events that would occur, a baseball field, some of the field events, a bit detached from the track, but as you can see, when we start to put all of the different functions onto the site, you're making good use of it, so we may have a few adjacencies that aren't ideal, but we do think we can make it work. These three yellow boxes on this side are relocated maintenance or storage sheds, so there's two existing sheds at the back and one that sits down in this area, so the plan right now is to relocate them to this side of the site. We would have tennis, so we would be constructing 12 new tennis courts in this scenario. In general, we may keep the location of the courts the same, but we'd be constructing new courts here, and adding four additional courts here, and then two softball fields in the northwest corner of the site. The next concept, so the last page of this tab, looks at a scenario where we would consider moving the stadium to the southeast corner of the site, so to a certain extent, it really is just flipping baseball and softball, and the multipurpose stadium from the southwest and the southeast corner. The one thing that's a little more challenging here, and we may even look at flipping this 90 degrees as well, to see if the field would fit in the north-south direction, if we could possibly do that, but this does create a bit of a challenge as we approach the main intersection on Vine, how we get access into the parking lot. One thing I apologize, I did not mention in the first couple of sites, is you'll see a turn-in, turn lane proposed, this was something that came out of our meetings with the city, they recommended that we consider improvements on Vine to include a right turn-in lane, to help clean up a bit of that traffic along the south side of the site. So this is looking at a turn lane, which would allow westbound vehicles to move into the site without waiting for that entire intersection to clear for traffic that's going through the site, excuse me. So, next tab, tab eight, I'll ask Steve to talk a little bit about the site plan and some of the different proposals for additions and renovation. Floor plan, I apologize.
Okay, thank you, Matt, and maybe you could use your mouse as I go through the plan and kind of describe things. When we looked at this, we really looked at probably five different goals that we had in mind as we were working through the plan. One was to improve the circulation of the plan, and get rid of a lot of the congestion, some of the pinch points and that kind of thing. Another was to introduce 21st century learning environments into the building to allow the staff to, and the teachers to kind of embrace those. Another one was to provide space for the academies, and the fifth grade in particular. Another one was natural light, the building right now, as you all know, doesn't have a lot of natural light, so we looked at that as a major component for the plan. Also, we wanted to create enough space for the special ed program, which has grown and which is really pretty important in this plan. So, with that, I'll kind of go through the changes that we're proposing, I should say the, one of the other things was to really give the building a new look, and so that was maybe the sixth thing we looked at. So if we start over on the left-hand side of the plan, where you have done some fairly recent work with some of the science rooms, we're going to leave those, we're going to create some new science rooms as well, bio-earth and math and so forth, and one of the big moves we're going to do here is to open up some light courts that were previously closed up, and we think that's going to just bring in a lot more natural light into those spaces, and adjacent to those, we'll have some, we'll take some of the classrooms and turn them into collaboration areas, and maybe some small group instruction, so that kind of gets to that 21st century learning environment that we're trying to create. Other than that, we're going to really look at taking all the lockers out of those corridors too, which is going to help that issue with the congestion. And so as we move forward up towards the existing gym, we're looking at, again, utilizing the face rooms that are there, the strive program, those are working out pretty well there, we're adding a space for one of those. We're going to do some renovation, we're proposing to do some renovation in the space just north of the existing gym, the flex, there's a flex classroom, the PAES program, the ABLE program, those classrooms would be renovated somewhat to accommodate those programs. And then in the major gym, we're looking at, we know there's a need for storage, and we feel that that's a pretty easy solution to create that storage from the existing, there's kind of that raised dais there, that we would close off, that would become storage, and then the rest of the gym would become a multipurpose gymnasium, used for a variety of things. At the kitchen area, the kitchen is working well, we would keep that as is, but the band room that you see there is, would go into what is now the existing cafeteria, and we would create a new serving line, that would then serve the new cafeteria, and in the middle space is, and the yellow space in general, is a new addition. And, so we keep that within proximity of that serving area, but we would increase the seating capacity to about 700 to 800, possibly even more. One of the big organizational concepts of this is to create that long, sort of curved, we'll call it the main living room, the gathering space where all the lockers would be, and that would be, that would get all the locker congestion out of the corridors, the educational space, and put it into a more common, active space. Off of that, we would create additional classroom space with a two-story academic wing, and on the first floor here, we're just showing the language arts and world language. We've also created a link between this living room space and the serving area, kind of straight in the middle there. And off of that, we're also looking at creating some new spaces, credit union, school store, concession, maybe a small cafe that could be open during sporting events, as well as during the day for the students, and we're creating some, a light court next to that, which would allow some of that natural light to continue to spill into the business ed and the student services. This creates a brand-new entrance, that you can see, off of that entrance is a, the high school offices. This would allow you to have a secure entry, similar to what you've got at the middle school, although this one would be, you'd enter, you couldn't get past the second set of doors, it would sort of force anyone coming into the building to go through that administrative area, so it really creates a good safety net there. And then as we move to the right of the plan, this is where we're taking advantage of that existing multi-level space to create the fifth grade academy, the healthcare, I'm sorry, freshman academy, we're not bringing the fifth grade over here, the freshman academy, it really breaks down nicely that way, because we can bring the academies over there, and then we can maybe even bring some of the freshman lockers into that space as well, so they kind of are off on their own there. And then we're also looking at adding to the gym, so you'd have a full three-station gym, and we would create a main gym in the center with seating on the side, similar to what you have, we would just increase the capacity, we'd be up to about 2,000 participants, or rather, audience members. And then, we're proposing on the second floor, where we've got a weight and fitness room that is connected to the offices with a corridor, and then above that, if you go to the second floor, you can see that we're sort of wrapping that gym box with a running track, running or walking track, which would also connect to the second floor of the academic space, and just create kind of a nice balcony, we're tying in a main, sort of a stairway there that would be sort of a monumental stair, we see kids sitting on there, maybe there's some performances off of there, we could, we'll design that so it's really an active And then, again, up on the second floor, we've got the academy space, and we've broken the, or we've reconfigured things so that it, we've sort of got a modified house concept, where we have social studies, and we have these living rooms for language arts with the classrooms around them, and we're adding a lot of collaborative space and small group instruction space, which again speaks to that 21st century learning concept that we want to incorporate in here.
So only a couple other minor little things, really looking at remodeling and upgrading project lead the way, woods, metals spaces with some improvement and renovation through this section, and then business ed gets grouped here, there's a good adjacency to some of the credit union, school, store concession things, which curricularly typically tie very well together, so having the business ed adjacency to those spaces really works well. And then as Steve touched on, the band room would be new, it would be remodeled cafeteria space to accommodate band, and then the other programs from within the music department would push up, choir would push into the band rooms, they'd be getting a larger space with some improvements, and then orchestra would push into the choir room, if I remember correctly. Or are we just moving choir? My apologies, orchestra stays, I believe, choir just pushes up.
Choir pushes out, yeah.
So, again, doesn't look like renovation here, but when we get into the budget, you'll see there's also some dollars allocated to make some nice improvements in the music department as well. And then the final is the lower floor plan, wrestling, nice room, and then the locker rooms would receive some attention on that lower level as well. So tab nine is a budget analysis, and this is a relatively in-depth document, I will summarize it now, and if board members have questions on specific areas, we'd be happy to get into them. The main concept here is really looking at three pieces, so we've got three different types of renovations, we'll get into those in a second. Major renovation, that's any renovation you saw in the reddish color, where we're going to do a, I'll say a full gut and rebuild, so we're going to take walls down to the structure, we're going to remove floors, ceilings are coming out, and we're going to be putting new walls, and reconfiguring those spaces quite significantly. The other extreme would be minor renovation, these would be spaces that, in general, are going to stay in the configuration they're in, we're not going to be moving walls and things like that, but we still need to do things such as pull ceilings down to accommodate fire protection, we're going to put new lighting in those spaces, a new fire alarm system, we're going to replace doors, we're going to put new flooring in, we're going to paint those spaces. So in general, every space within the building is going to get touched at some level, from minor being walls staying with improvements, to major being, walls being moved and put in new positions to better support the way teachers teach and students learn in a 21st century environment. Moderate is a bit of a middle ground, as you can imagine, we're going to move some walls, but not all walls, we're still going to replace flooring, we're going to replace doors, things like that. So that's kind of the intermediary where we're going to do more work with walls, but it's definitely not a full gut and redo. So the second page of the budget really looks at mass demolition, that would be removing the two spaces which are being created for light courts on the southwest side of the plan. Envelope improvements refer to roofing, we saw the diagram earlier for that, tuck pointing and masonry repair on the existing building, so cleaning up some challenges we have there, replacing windows on the exterior and doors that are remaining. Many of them do get covered by this addition, but there are still some that remain that would be replaced as part of the building envelope improvement section. We then went through existing infrastructure, this is what came out of the plumbing HVAC and electrical engineers being onsite and doing our walkthroughs, we met with the technology group, we met with the facilities teams, we have a really good understanding of what the goals are here. I won't go through this in line item again, but these are areas really that look at the investment in improvements to the existing building, that would be necessary to accommodate both the remodeled spaces and the existing needs that are present within those systems. Site improvements, this is a significant category of work, as you saw, we're not only looking to expand the amount of parking, we also need to accommodate rebuilding parking onsite, we have the access drive improvement piece of this, there is utilities included here, landscaping, which is requirements of the city, we've got concrete work being sidewalks and entry areas that we need to accommodate within the site budget. The other piece of this is stormwater, it's the largest dollar figure you see in this, stormwater is not something that the school district has any control over, it's controlled by the municipality, so the city has jurisdiction over that, along with the DNR, Wisconsin DNR, so it's a major area of investment. Right now, the plan is to do the stormwater detention, so the holding of that water would be onsite underground. We don't have enough room onsite for large ponds, which you may see in some developments throughout the community, they'll use a pond, and that will become the detention, given that we're reusing the site, and it's a good investment, and we do have to put that we're reusing the site and it's a good investment, and we do have to put some of that below grade, so that's factored into this as well. So again, a relatively significant piece, but as you can see, we're doing a lot of work on the site as well. The addition, as I described at the middle school, is really, in this case, all of the areas in yellow that you saw are accommodated within this. So general construction all the way down through specialty equipment and things like that, you'll see line items for things like sound systems and gymnasiums and cafeterias. We tried a line item though, so you could get a sense of, of not only scope of what's included, but also the level of attention that these budgets have been given by not only our team, but the engineers. We'll then move into some of these, and I won't go through every one in detail because there's a fair amount here, again. Ceilings, lighting, HVAC, and fire protection, this is a category of work where any section that we're not making other improvements to, we're still going to look at new lighting, new ceilings, and we're going to sprinkle this entire building. So not only will the addition have fire protection added, the existing building will as well. It's, it's a code requirement, it's also a good move from a safety perspective when we're renovating a building with the level of intensity that we are here. Minor renovations include things like the, kind of the eastern half, or eastern third, two-thirds of the competition gym, the library, locker rooms, music tech ed spaces, all the way down through the sec, end of page five with the strive, able, face, science section of the building. You'll see, see here, even in areas where we have minor renovations identified, that means we're not moving walls, we still do have science casework identified, so that science lab, while the walls won't get moved, the proposal is to put new casework in, just to, just to make sure we're clear, these are labs that the district did not touch last summer. Those labs that the district invested in last summer are staying as is, the scope of work would be ceilings, fire protection, lighting, and then HVAC improvements where appropriate, so that investment is protected in this plan. Moderate renovations, as you see on the next, a couple of pieces, are, are areas such as pay, face, student services. And then we get into the major renovations, kind of midpoint on page six, this is really looking at the, the western science where we're creating some larger lab lecture facilities, math area, the servery and band section of the building, the auditorium bathrooms themselves directly off that lobby space, and moving all the way down to the, where are we here? Midpoint on page eight. We have existing corridor improvements as well, you've got some corridors and a fair amount on the west end and a little bit on the east end that are terrazzo floors, so you'll see some sections here where we're saying, don't replace terrazzo, keep it, it's a great flooring, it will last forever. So there's two separate budgets here, areas where we have terrazzo, the proposal is to keep that terrazzo in place and, and make all the other improvements such as Steve said, lockers coming outdoors, being replaced, ceilings, lighting, paint, et cetera. Where we don't have terrazzo, the proposal is to pull the, the flooring out of that space and put new flooring in. So the proposal here, as we've talked a little bit previously, is, is the concept of a like-new high school. By having budgets that are allocated like this, we're able to begin tying the finishes, the building finishes together in areas specifically with flooring here that don't have terrazzo. Again, the only reason for the terrazzo, it's great, it's really expensive to put in with a first cost, and we would probably struggle to afford terrazzo throughout the whole building, so keep it where it is, we'll probably polish it, clean it up, but it's a great flooring and we wouldn't propose replacing it. One section I did skip past a little bit on the middle school, and I shouldn't have a focus on it here, the, after the subtotal line on page eight, there are all of the costs associated with construction that are required, bonding requirements that are statutorily required for school districts to carry on a project, insurance costs for a contractor or construction manager, general conditions, these are the costs for job trailers and project superintendents and project managers and their computers and their travel and their phones and all the things that go into the management and staffing side of, of construction, that's a general conditions piece. Temporary partitions, as you'll see later on, there's nine phases potentially of additions and renovations proposed, so this is acknowledgement of temporary enclosures, dust protection, things that are going to have to be done during construction to create a safe environment for students to learn, so that's the line item associated with temporary partitions. Construction manager pre-construction fee, if the district elects to hire a construction manager, there's typically a cost for their services from the time a referendum would pass until construction would start, so this is acknowledgement of that potential fee. And then there's overhead profit and markup. Construction organizations obviously put a percentage markup on projects, and, and this is suggesting what that could possibly be. So this is showing the line item of, of just over, just about $67.6 million for the scope as shown. We then get into, as I described on the middle school, all of the soft cost categories again, so you'll see here estimating contingencies, fees, and then all of the permits and things associated with the building project. Hazardous materials is another piece here, Jim and the district's environmental consultant did a great job helping, they have, they do check this regularly, and so we were able to go back to the last report that was done on the high school, they identified the number of known, it's critical, there's a number of known joints in the HVAC system, the amount of flooring, so that's all allocated here, and, and the consultant did a great job helping with pricing that as well. We also are carrying an allowance because most likely we will find more as we get into this, so that's covered in here as well. So as you can see here, the, the total project at the bottom of about $77.79 million at this stage. The next piece is, is a couple additional pieces, so the auditorium upgrades, this is a, a potentially a, a separate project if the board would like to consider it, and I'll kind of jump to the end of the line, about 2.5 million roughly, 2.46 million. This is looking at a rebuild of the house, basically of the auditorium, along with an enhancing the lighting, rigging, sound systems within the space. So you see some line items in base project, so if you elect not to go, it just says you can get a frame of reference, the things such as fire protection, HVAC, and then fire alarm and general lighting, those are, costs are included in the base project at this point, so that's one of the things to note here. The other pieces that the majority, and quite a bit of this cost is really in specialty equipment, theatrical lighting, stage rigging, a video system, seating for the theater, acoustical treatments for walls and ceilings, a sound system, a house lighting system, these are all things that would really make an enhancement to the current auditorium. And then we get to the outdoor athletics piece as well under that same tab, so this is kind of building upon the base site investment that was included in the, in, in the base high school project as we reviewed. There's additional earthwork and things related to these projects. There's a running track, the multipurpose stadium with synthetic turf lights, scoreboard and a sound system, bleachers for, with 3,000 seats including a press box, the baseball and softball fields at this point would be natural grass with irrigation and lights. Tennis courts, as we discussed earlier, 12 new tennis courts with lighting and seating, we would relocate the existing maintenance buildings and sheds, and then there's an acknowledgement of the outdoor building which we showed adjacent to the multipurpose stadium. You, excuse me, you will notice on the bottom of page two there, if the district is interested, there are some additional costs if you would like to go to synthetic turf on the baseball and softball fields. It would obviously add a, a fair amount of flexibility and frequency to the use of those spaces if you want to go that route, but you can see the, the costs associated broken out there on, on page two. So in closing, the final tab here is, there's a schedule, as you can see, that's, this would be kind of a Excel spreadsheet schedule, and then there is the reality of a project at the high school and what it would really potentially take to, to make this happen. It was critically important, we thought, to explore this. I will say this will, I'm 99% sure this would change as we got through the process and really dug into the details, but we wanted to make sure that we felt it was doable, and we do feel it is, is very feasible to accomplish. So big picture, phase one would be to construct new parking on the green space. As I said earlier, the new addition would be built on top of parking, parking is a significant challenge on the site the way it is, so the thought is get this new parking built first before we take the existing parking away. After that is done, we would commence construction along with, of the new addition in the front. Phase two would also be if the stadium goes, if it's part of it, that would also commence in that April timeframe. Phase three of the built, would be, of the site, would be the building, that would be from about April until March, April of 17, March of 18. Phase four would be looking at creating, again, I'm saying this is if the athletic fields are included only from the perspective that it's the longest duration of construction and the most complicated. If we go the other route, no athletics, these phases still generally stay as is, but they may be abbreviated slightly. So phase four would be the, the northwest corner, I would say. Phase five would be looking at rebuilding and enhancing the parking lot in the far south, targeting a summer timeframe for that. Keep in mind, we would have parking in the back, so we wouldn't be without parking, but we still want to limit the interruptions and the impact of parking during the school year as much as we can. And then the final phase of this would be phase six, would be the southeast corner in restoration there. The red line is really representing our thoughts on where construction staging and laydown would go, so to a certain extent, for the entire duration of this project, the southeast corner, the green space that's there, would be needed and necessary for job trailers, contractor parking, laydown for equipment and materials that they're going to need to do this work. We really positioned it here because we think it gives them the best access, we don't have to bring that construction traffic through the, what is the most challenging intersection on Vine in the school district, so even as they're coming and going, it's, as much as we can get it detached from the student traffic, we aren't bringing those contractors and deliveries through neighborhoods. So it really felt that this was the most logical place to consider staging at this point. So that's site phasing specifically. The next piece of this is building phasing, and I think Peggy's probably nervous about this, as, as she should be. We've done many projects of this type, they are challenging at times, we, we've had staff that obviously struggle, there's a few moves, a few extra, a little bit of extra effort. We've often found ironically that students think it's great, there's all kinds of things going on, things are changing, they're getting to be part of a project that's happening in their school, so they, they roll with it. But this plan really looks at phase one being the addition, so obviously getting started on the addition, the main reason for that is we want, we want to get the classroom space completed, so we can begin to use that new classroom space as our flex space, so as we're going to renovate another academic area, we roll that department or those group of teachers that are displaced into these new classroom spaces. So that really becomes our flexible space in the interim, we're using the addition as those classroom spaces. So phase one is the addition, phase two is some summer of 2017 work, which is going to be remodeling the library, remodeling the tech ed area. Phase three looks at the first piece of major renovation associated with the gym and locker rooms on the east side. Phase four is looking at remodeling the kitchen, servery, and the science area, you'll note that that's a summer project, again, we were pretty specific with trying to prevent science from being down other than a summer. That's a, one of the subject matters, it's obviously more difficult to say go, be flexible, teach in a regular classroom environment, so we tried to focus science on summer. Same thing with the kitchen servery piece, the kitchen's not going to be affected significantly, but the servery will be, again, we want to try to focus those efforts on a summer so that students have access to food the entire time. And then the final phases, to a certain extent, are really rolling through and remodeling and touching all the final pieces. Phase five is a significant phase, taking the ramped section or the eastern section of the building and converting it to art and academies. Phase six is looking at making the music move, so really, we needed to hold on this piece because until band was done in phase three, we couldn't come back and tackle the other renovations that were needed in phase six. Phase seven is looking at the pay, strive, and auxiliary gym. Phase eight is math, and then phase nine is the final phase, which would be the southwest corner for art and thing, or I'm sorry, science and some math. So complex phasing-wise, again, a lot of detail that would have to be worked out if the community and, and the board proceed with this, but having been involved as a team with many, many phased addition renovation projects, we do feel that this phasing at a conceptual level would work and, and would allow the building to continue serving and educating students throughout its construction. So the final piece we have before we go to questions, and, and this wasn't in your book because these were prepared over the weekend and then into the evening last night, are some exterior images and interior images of, of what the high school could be, and I'll try to make these a little bigger if I can, might help. So this is a potential view, did that even help? Didn't even look like it did, sorry. This is a view, a bit of a bird's eye, so really looking kind of from the south, what would be east, looking northwest. So this is the existing one-story academic, south side of the building, and as you heard Steve describing the floor plan, the curving connector link, which is, to a certain extent enclosing the current outdoor hallway, is represented here. The cafeteria commons piece would be here, the two-story academics through here, the entry area and secure entry right through this section, the high school office area here, and then the fitness piece. One of the things we thought that this image showed really well was how potentially you're getting all the academic and support spaces necessary, and you're really putting a new face on the high school. The thought was to, not that there's anything wrong with the current high school, but if we're going to make this investment, this would give you a new front door and a new look for the majority of that south face of the building. So that's an exterior image, and I will say, these are very conceptual, they were, they were pulled together to give you a sense of what the building could be. We haven't picked colors, we haven't done window patterning, we haven't done any of that yet, but we wanted to give both you as board members and the community a sense of what could be in these proposals. The next image is a look at a potential cafeteria commons space, so this would be a view standing in the commons, to a certain extent, adjacent to the current library and looking back towards the main entrance. So as Steve mentioned, there's a possible cafe concept, we've obviously branded this the Raider Cafe on this left side showing that, this would be a gym entry to the expanded gym area, you see the walking recreational track cutting through here, and this, again, this would be a, a nice glass wall with light spilling into the existing, or sorry, to the new cafeteria space. And then the final image we looked at was the possibility, this would be standing basically outside the second floor academic on the extension of the walking track, the corridor, looking back towards the cafeteria. So you see the lockers down below in the locker bays, you see the academic wing here to the right, you see the track along here, the, the stair element coming through here, and then you see the hints of the cafeteria through these two glass walls through the light court off in the distance. So as I said with the exterior, not final colors, definitely not final plans, there's a lot of work that would have to be done between the time the community would support a referendum and the final vision would be formed, but we were hoping that this did a bit of a job showing what could be, and potentially taking what are relatively mundane 2D site plans and floor plans and giving you a bit of sense of, of what these spaces could look and feel like. So with that, Jamie, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. All right, before we suspend Robert's rules, then at this time, if there's anybody that has submitted requests to speak, this is the time for you to do that. And again, we understand that, you know, this meeting has been set since November 10th, and we were anticipating getting some feedback from the architect and engineers after they've done their walkthrough, which they did on December 1st, so a lot of this work is, and this number crunching has all been done in basically the last 14 days. And so, this is, as he said, conceptual, and we're just, you know, always open to hear from the community and from the public. So for those folks that have questions, having heard the presentation, some of you may have been able to get on the website, I know that the information was only very recent, but it was also only very recently given to the, to the board members as well, but there will be further opportunity then as we go into the meeting, as questions, more questions come up and you hear some of the board members ask their questions, if there's follow-up questions, just jot those down, hand them to Tim, and then he'll get them to me or Nick, and then we'll get those submitted. So with that, Tim, do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Okay. First card handed to me is Kathy Leaf. Kathy is a North Hudson resident, so I'll just go ahead and say that.
Yes.
Please state your, your comments.
Thank you for preparing this presentation, I work in business to understand the crunch of last-minute presentations, so the renderings, I think, at the end were very helpful for me, I hope for other people in the crowd too. I'd like to say that I think that this plan is the ultimate compromise, we've really come together, I think, to give and take, as you should and as good government should. So we've definitely come a long way throughout this process, and I commend you for the transparency that you've had with us and our opportunities to speak with you about it. What I think though, is the few things to consider as you're working through tonight, is that we've compromised in that we found a centrally located place, obviously, we're using existing facilities, which was another sticking point with some people from the last referendum. So what we really want to remember though, is that we want to plan for the 21st century education that our kids deserve. Don't skimp, we want this done right, we want this done, the community has said in the survey that they're willing to support 85 million in a referendum, let's do it, let's get it done. And we also want to make sure that we're poised for future growth, flexibility, so all of those things in mind, I was really pleased to see the work with the academy pro- I was really pleased to see the work with the academy program because I'm actually a mentor for some of the kids there and they're doing great work. All of these improvements are huge and they will benefit our kids. And one of the main things, one of the main reasons that my husband and I moved here in the first place was this community and the school system. And it's time, it's time that we invest in the kids and we do it right. Thanks.
Thank you. I guess I didn't indicate Ms. Leaf was well within the, the usual time limit is three minutes. And so far, we've got five requests. So if we don't get substantially more requests, I might allow for a little bit more time. But we also want to respect everyone else this time as well. So I'm inviting at this time, James Schertz, another North Hudson resident.
Hello. I'm currently a student at the high school. And I was just wondering about some changes to the departments. Mostly, I'm sort of concerned about splitting up the music department. We have quite a bunch of connection inside that. And if you're going to put us on different sides of the auditorium, it sort of breaks that.
Okay.
Also, the, this is another concern. The band room has quite a few adjacent rooms that go with it that I didn't see being moved, but I thought it would be more cost-effective to just move the choir room to the current cafeteria. And that's all.
All right. And I don't know, Matt, you want to indicate what the thought was there? And again, I'll emphasize that I know your design was preliminary. We probably wouldn't get to final design until, and programming until we had a passed referendum, but go ahead.
That's a good caveat. Those are great observations, thank you. I will say that the square or rectangle that's drawn for band does encompass the square footage necessary for practice rooms, ensemble rooms, instrument storage rooms. So it's a good point, they're not shown, they would be intended and are programmed to be in that space. I will kind of defer to either building leadership or future discussions related to the best adjacency or the best potential component of music to move. But I appreciate your comments and I think they're very good ones, thank you.
We're now up to seven requests, so I'm going to still keep it at the three minutes plus, plus or minus a few seconds if you want to finish your thoughts. But next up is city resident, Bob Baumann.
Hello. 1600 Chestnut Drive, I just bought a house there. So I will have a great view of the parking lot. And, but I figured if Sheila and Jim won't complain about a potential football field across from their house, I won't complain about a parking lot. I won't tell you that my business knowledge tells me that this is right or wrong. I won't throw my hands up like another community member and say, who's going to pay my taxes? I expect she can pay her own taxes and I'll pay mine. And I just wanted to stress that this is a compromise. And, you know, the last referendum, it was $105 million. It was new property, it was new building. A lot of the people didn't like the position of it, where it was located. So now we're coming back. We're remodeling, a big remodel, obviously. But it's no new property, it's not as much new services, and I think we really have to consider that. I think you guys did a great job with this, very involved and involved the community more than ever before. You, I like going, that you went to Minnetonka, I would love to see Minnetonka. I would hope if this moves forward, some community members would have an opportunity to do that. It's obvious that they did it right. They didn't strip it. I would ask when the survey was done in Minnetonka, if they did one, did the board come back and strip it down 20 million less than that or 15 million less than that? Or did they do it right? Because I think that a fear of mine is that the community says, okay, we've got a number. Now we need to cut it down. That won't get us to where we need to be and we'll be back here in 10, 15 years. So there's a responsibility factor there, and I hope the board takes that in consideration, that there are many people that are not willing to support this because it's not a new building. It might not be, you know, put us on par with River Falls and New Richmond. But let's, let's consider that this is a compromise on all sides. And I see an opportunity to put, bring this community together and have many different groups that don't typically work together, work together to get this done. I hope we don't throw that away. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Next up is Ellen Montgomery. And I see your address here, but I'm not positive whether that's Hudson or St. Joe Township. I think it's Hudson.
We like to call it Burkhardt.
Okay. Burkhardt Independence Day, we'll call it that, all right.
I just want to echo what's been said previous. I want to thank this board for your service. It's hard work and there's very little gratitude you get, you know, for all that you do. And I thank you, and I know there are many people unheard who thank you as well. I want to thank you for challenging each other on this board, for challenging assumptions, for recognizing the overall need that the community has and for working toward solutions to that need. And to that end, I appreciated the process, the talking sessions, the very well-attended community workshops, the transparency of the survey process. And I think all of this speaks to your commitment to really listening to your constituents for this, what I see as this sort of third go-around. And I'll just echo, you know, the survey, the way I read it, said that, you know, the majority of respondents supported option three with a 79 to 86 million dollar solution. The constituents want a high school that meets current needs and future potential needs. We want a solution that isn't something that we're going to need to come back to in a few years and do it all again. So we really want something that has that flexibility. And we hope that you'll choose a referendum level that creates schools that the community will not just feel are meeting needs, but that the community will be proud of, that the community will say this is a centerpiece for our fine community. And it should be a fine school and a fine education platform that everybody can get around. So again, thank you for your service. I'm looking forward to working really hard to help put forward this referendum once it's passed at that level that the community is willing to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Stacy Bartlett.
Hi, friends. You might have to cut me off because I have a whole bunch of questions and I won't take it personally.
If you have your questions ready, then you just go ahead and rattle them off. When Matt will take notes or somebody there will help him and then he'll get them answered when you're through.
And this is for Bray. Can you go back to the middle school plans and explain to me how that two-story addition fits into the existing house model? I just want to make sure that there's enough room for, that we're getting enough at the middle school.
Sure, very briefly, I'll say half of a house is five classrooms, as you can see here. So an existing house has these five classrooms with a shared resource or collaboration space. And so we're basically replicating that five classrooms with the shared collaboration space. Now, it's not a true two, as you see here, shared house with this little narrow linking corridor. But the concept with these connecting corridors was intentional, that we gave them access to and some flexibility. We did look at a single-story concept that had a dual house on it, but the thought was that didn't provide the flexibility for age groupings. The thought is that having a five-classroom house on both floors provides better long-term flexibility because it's more appropriate for grade levels that would be housed on those floor levels.
So is this an additional house or is it expanding the existing houses?
It's a bit of terminology and I think I defer to Nick or some of the other educators on how you would envision that functioning.
So what this would do is we currently have 13 teachers that are on carts that help take overflow students from the different houses. So what this model that Matt has put forward, essentially it adds two additional houses so it gets those teachers off of carts and tries to maintain the integrity of the house concept, the middle school concept. So that's what this would do.
But there's three grades and you're only adding two houses, so how does that work?
So the thought would be, we would also look at reprogramming other parts of the building. For example, Merlin House, which is on the second floor, which houses a good portion of our special ed population in the building. And we know the best practice is probably not to group all of our special ed students in one area of the building. And so the goal would then be to recoup that, that part of the building, that house is another house, that'd be a third house, so one for each grade level. And then possibly look at the multipurpose space, since we are adding the gym, and repurposing the multipurpose space for some additional classroom space, not necessarily special ed classroom space, but for some additional classroom space that way.
But there will be space for special ed?
There would, yes, there would be space for special ed and they would be, you know, all of our kids should be dispersed throughout the entire building regardless of their needs.
Agreed. I just want to make sure they have that space. Along the lines of space, I see that you're replacing, or that you're getting rid of the art and the family and consumer science storage. And I just want to know if that's going to be replaced because when you get rid of storage, that's difficult.
Simple answers, yes. There it is for art and there it is for family and consumer ed.
Thanks. Technology infrastructure, I didn't see that as a line item. And I think that as we start to add more and more individual devices, the one-to-one program, I'm afraid of bogging down that technology infrastructure, and so I'm wondering if that has been considered.
It has. The electrical engineers who were onsite on the first met with the IT staff for about an hour or more. They toured the building and they compared goals for IT infrastructure and they are included in the budgets as presented.
Sweet. What is the total cost for the middle school? I thought I saw 9.5 million, but I wasn't sure.
I think that's about right in approximation. Let me look at the, give you the total.
Well, he's looking up the total, Stacy. I just want you to know, beyond your three minutes, if you've got other questions and you want to just ask them straight out and then we'll get answers to them.
9.68.
9.68, okay. Am I at three minutes?
Yes, you are beyond three minutes, yeah.
All right. Do you want me to just like rattle them off?
Yeah, rattle them off, we'll write them down, then we'll address them at the end.
Perfect. What is the base high school plan cost? I would like to go back to the slide that showed the traffic flow for option three and the stadium possibly poised at a right angle or at a 90-degree angle, just because you went through those very quickly and I didn't see them. In regards to the 21st century learning areas, I wondered if those would be at the expense of anything like teacher offices as part of a remodel right now? That is, you get, you lose one to the other and that's not going over very well. I wanted to make sure that the teachers had input into that 21st century space. Also wanted to discuss the size of the collaboration space. If it's too small, it's not usable. If it's too large, is it at the expense of something else? You mentioned freshman lockers in the ninth grade area, but I didn't see those. Science has its own wing, but there's a ninth grade academy. Is there a science room or rooms in the ninth grade academy? Are there locker rooms? I didn't see them for the new gyms. Page two.
All right. You know what, why don't we have, because you've done that before so well, writing them down on the paper and then get them submitted. But good question on the freshman lockers because that was going to be one of my questions. So you stole one of my questions tonight.
And keep in mind, if you don't want to do this publicly, we'll stay as long as people want after and engage in discussion and questions as well.
Okay, because I didn't get to page two. But I do want to say thank you as the other people have because you've been very transparent and I appreciate that you're willing to listen to our feedback because I think this is a community thing.
I will say quickly, most of your questions, the answers are affirmative or positive and that we've considered them and have solutions for them or are doing things to enhance them.
Well, then I thank you for that as well.
All right, next up, Joe Wustabar. Believe it's Towne O'Troy.
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, thank all you for the process. You know, I've been involved as much as I can. I think I made every workshop except the one that you had over deer hunting, so I'm sorry I had to miss that one. Anyway, I just had a couple of questions, actually just comments on the first thing. We all know that at those workshops, the enrollment data that was presented was flat or stagnant out to 2040. You know, just keeping that in mind. So, and I think one of the comments Jamie might have made was that that's a game changer. And just keeping that in mind, being that, you know, being that enrollment is flat and at this current, at this current time, we've got, according to the numbers that were given out at that workshop that we all use in our analysis, we've got 363 seats of capacity available in our current school system. My question or comment would be, has the board strongly considered, and at the elementary school level, if you look at those same numbers, we have 553 seats available at the elementary school level, has the board, or how has the board really considered using the existing space that exists in our current school system before we do any kind of additions, anything, especially the middle school? We have K through 5 in that, in that middle school right now that could be moved into our current elementary school system, redistrict, and you could save yourself $10 million right there at the middle school. If you run that simulation, you'll see that in those numbers. So I'd ask the board to really, I know this is all conceptual now, you said it's pretty high conceptual. Numbers are put together in 14 days. So there's a lot of crunching and grinding need to be done, but please consider that. Then at the last referendum about a year ago, to renovate the current high school, and I know now this is, it was renovated to district office space into an 8, 9 building, it was 22.6 million. Now we're talking 77-plus. You know, about a $55 million increase. Now I know it's apples and oranges, you know, I know the comparison, but is it that much apples and oranges? I mean, 55 million will get you three to four manufacturing shells that my company 3M builds, with HVAC and electrical. So I'm wondering, wow, that's a lot of money. And my big concern there is, are we addressing the needs or are we addressing the wants? And that's the one I really want the board to strongly consider and look at. That's what you'd be asked to do in the business world. So please really look, what are the really big needs that we really need? And because these numbers, they feel to me that there's a lot of wants in here. And it's tough to afford when we got enrollment that is basically stagnant or declining out to 2040 with the current best information we have at this point. The other thing I'd like the board to consider is athletics versus academics. I'd like to see the athletics stand alone on its own referendum and the academics stand alone and address academics first, that's the most important need. And really consider that on a referendum to keep the costs palatable to the public and not throw it all into one and make it more confusing. And then the last thing I'd like to consider is benchmarking. I was at a dance competition with my daughter at Monomni, Wisconsin about a week ago. They did their renovation of the high school and renovations to all their existing schools for $35 million. And it's beautiful. I mean, take a look at it. It's the gym wide-open space, the light that's coming in. And that wasn't 35 just for the high school. It was that there was a portion of that allocated to high school and all the surrounding schools. So I guess my point is, we, I feel the board has a lot of number crunching to do yet, to see what's reasonable because it just feels to me, again, there's a lot of wants versus needs on this. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Jim Ludiger, city resident.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jim Ludiger and first of all, I just want to say thank you for the whole process. The compromise has been tremendous. It's a citizen looking out towards the board and thinking these people have done a lot of work in this process. My question really is about financing. You know, I'm an old finance guy and I worry about interest rates rising between now and election time or whenever this gets approved, assuming it does. What are you doing to hedge the increase in rates and the, obviously, the increase in cost?
Okay. Brian Brewer from Baird is here. And Brian doesn't have a formal presentation, but I don't know if you'll have follow-up questions, Jim, but do you have, or do you want Brian to address it after the other public members have spoken? We could do it either time.
So you're right that there is, interest rates are still very low. The, they've actually moved lower over the last couple of months. The Federal Reserve Board is scheduled to increase rates tomorrow, most likely. That's the probability at this point. And what is not known is that we've been at the 0 to 0.25 overnight lending rate since 2008. So what's not known is, as they begin that process of normalizing that overnight lending rate, what will that do to the long-term rate? Because the overnight lending rate is the very short-term rates. Typically, what moves long-term rates higher is the, is the fear of inflation or the expectation of inflation. And then supply and demand based on what's going on around the world. So that's actually been what recently has been moving rates to lower levels in the last couple of months, is some of the geopolitical items that have been going on, as well as, you know, the struggles in the manufacturing sector has dampened expectations of inflation at this point, so rates are still very, very favorable. As we run and will continue to run updates, as the board deliberates on the amount and then the timing, we've developed a plan that would phase in the financing over multiple years, depending on the staging of the phases and, and construction. But because we're at rates that are this low and the expectation among economists across the country is that rates would continue to rise in the next few years, the plan would call for borrowing more than is needed in two thousand, let's, let's say there's a two thousand sixteen referendum, we would try and finance and lock in more of the financing than is needed for construction in two thousand and sixteen. And typically what we, what we would do and what we have been doing is locking in the longer-term portion, the majority of the longer-term fixed-rate maturities. And then if there's a, if there will be a two thousand seventeen financing, that would be more of a middle-term financing. And if there's a portion of the financing that goes into two thousand eighteen, we would try and front-load or, or pay that off in the short end, so that if rates do rise over time, we've managed the exposure to that rising interest rate environment by locking in the bulk of the financing on the longer maturities, which is the bulk of the total interest cost with a twenty-year plan. So that, that's some of the moving parts, but you had used the word hedge. And unfortunately, the board can't do anything without authority for the district, without authority to, to proceed with borrowing to get into the marketplace. The one thing that they have been doing that is within their authority is managing your, your existing debt load from prior referendums. And they've executed a series of debt refinancings over the past five or six years to reduce the interest cost related to the prior debt that was authorized via referendum. So that's, that's, you know, they're managing the things that they can, that they can manage. And ultimately, the, the plan and the financing strategy would encompass, you know, ideas and concepts that would try to mitigate that potential risk of rates rising during the construction period. So hopefully that helps answer the question.
Thanks, Brian, and I think we'll have you come back later and then address impact of some of these numbers on mill rates and so forth later, later on, all right. Now we have two more cards, but the next card is actually two speakers and they're Jackson Helmers and Parker Holm, and they are Hudson High School students. I presume that they're district residents, since they're in our high school, but gentlemen, if you could indicate which municipality you're in and what grade you're in, all right? And we're going to still give you combined three minutes, if that's okay.
Okay. I'm Parker Holm, I'm City of Hudson, and I'm a junior, Jackson's also a junior, but yeah, he's from Holden though. And we're both also in the academies, the STEM Academy. Overall, in general, we believe the new upgrades to school are very necessary as the current school is outdated pretty much across the board, especially the west side with the exception of the two new science rooms that were constructed over the previous summer, but all of the classrooms on that side are outdated and needing renovations. And throughout the building, most of the classrooms are that way. And the need for space is also obvious. Currently, we have math, a couple of math classes that are in pretty much like a closet that's like, that was used to be called the raider room, whatever, it's like a office pretty much. And there's several classes that are like that where thirty or more students crammed into small spaces. And then there's departments that have some teachers on one side building and some on the other, so the, the new idea of having all departments in one space, that's a good plan too. And then the west side and east side building right now is connected pretty much by one hallway and then the outside space and in the winter months, which is a good part of our school year here, pretty much no one can, no one goes inside because it's extremely cold, obviously. So we have one small corridor connecting one side building to the other with several hundred students going back and forth in there within the five-minute passing time we have currently, and that hallway gets very crowded. So the new addition that connects the two sides more efficiently with more hallways, more corridors is, is a good plan, very necessary in our school too.
Yeah, so me and Parker are both part of the STEM Academy and I just think that it's very crucial to have space for the STEM Healthcare Academy to thrive, because it's really like hands-on, project-based environment. And if you would walk into any engineering classroom at any given day, you'd see kids at computers or labs just elbow-to-elbow, you know, just like struggling for space and everything. And so with growth and everything that's going on, it would be more beneficiary for the people just to have more space, do the hands-on, which really helps the STEM and healthcare students thrive, I think.
Yeah, and also our project Lead the Way, you guys kind of talked about this, the whole project Lead the Way curriculum is four sets of classes that share two classrooms combined. The one classroom has about four different classes and throughout the day. And those classrooms are small, too small for the classes that they have, their outlets literally in the floor to accommodate for some of those classes and the power necessary for them and the different types of technology used in them. So the new addition helping to create a new environment for those classes would improve that whole experience of that project Lead the Way course, which is vital to our school.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your input. All right. And then our last card is Kenzie Holger. Just says Hudson, so I'm not sure if that's city or town, but...
Hi, I'm Kenzie. I am a current student at Hudson High School. I just started as an academy student in the STEM Academy. And it's really nice that the academy areas will be grouped together. I know right now we're working on a huge combined project throughout all of our main classes. And I know me and a few other groups have been back and forth between our classes, like across the school, trying to get some of this stuff done. And it's just kind of a hassle having to do that, so it'd be really nice to group us all together. And then, this has been addressed already, but the concern of the hallway space, especially in the winter, it's, most of us, I know so many people that are worried about getting other classes on time, because there are so many people trying to get through that hallway and then the library is right there, people are coming in and out of that between classes and it's just kind of a struggle trying to get through there. And then, one of the things that was also addressed was athletics and our curriculum and stuff like that and academics. It'd be really nice if we could put athletics under their own referendum, because a lot of us have a strong feeling towards the fact that sometimes it seems as if the athletics are being addressed more than our academics are, and that's kind of a worry for some of the students at the school. So it'd be really nice if that could be under its own referendum. And then, small classrooms, I know there's a couple of classes where we have to get extra chairs and desks and stuff like that, because there isn't enough room for all of us. So it'd be really nice if we could actually seat everybody. That's a big concern for a lot of us. And then, I heard something about ninth grade academy spaces, so is there different like academy spaces for, like, are we just talking about in general the freshman academies, like they're branched off with just their three main teachers? Are we talking about getting like STEM academies and stuff like that for the ninth graders as well? And then like, you know, would all the academy areas be in one area? Would one academy be on one side and one academy be on the other? Kind of?
All right. Very good. Thank you for your comments. Matt, do you want to address that last one on the academies? I think we had...
That's, it's a good question. The STEM, freshman and healthcare academies are proposed to be housed in, in the current eastern ramp section of the building, which is included in the major renovation category. So extensive renovation of that eastern ramp section for the three academies along with art.
All right. I want to thank those that came forward to speak and invite anyone that does have a question as we go forward tonight with discussion, you want to write that down on postcards that we have available and we'll try to get those addressed. At this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend Robert's rules.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend Robert's rules of order.
Second.
All right. Motion by Sue, second by Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes. We are now in informal session, it's a work session, and I'll just open it up to board members, I guess, who have questions. Or, Matt, did you have any other questions or answers? I know Steve was jotting down some of those other questions, if you want to get to those first, as we have board members getting prepared to ask their questions.
Well, I think one of the, one of the questions had to do with the, did we, did we take out space to the expense of the teachers' offices? And the question is, no, we've actually added space, we've, we've accommodated staff offices within the spaces, so, so we've actually improved that. Another one had to do with the collaborative space size, and that's something that we're going to continue to work on. I think the size is certainly there and we know from past experience, that's what's critical about these twenty-first century spaces, the collaborative spaces, to get the right furniture in there. And so we would, we've got money in the budget for furniture, we would work with you on that and that's going to really make those spaces work properly. You've got to furnish them properly. Science classrooms in the, in the freshman lab was another question and, and that, those are incorporated in the, in the freshman academy. And, and then the other question about the freshman lockers, the intention is to, there are lockers in the existing space and the intention is to replace those lockers in those spaces for the freshmen.
Okay, so just, it's depicted there, it's kind of small and it's not labeled, but those are keeping basically lockers that are already there.
There's two concepts we've discussed and, and the lockers and the cost of the lockers are included in the budget, the placement, I think would be a detailed decision we need to get to. There is room to put them within the house or a concept could be to consider using the current, I'll say, what is, what do you call that, the commons space outside the office would be another position adjacent to the freshman academy area. We have square footage there to do locker banks in that location as well.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any board members, questions?
Question for, for Matt. We've talked to and have heard, and first off, kudos to our students, to have four students stand up and ask questions in this group is absolutely fantastic. We've had some discussion around need of space. Can you talk a little bit to the difference in how twentieth-century education, the space needs for that versus twenty-first-century education?
Sure. Yeah, I would say a couple of things and I absolutely, we design educational spaces, we're not educators, so we can speak to kind of how we react to educators and curriculum and I will definitely encourage educators to chime in where appropriate. A lot of what has changed is the project-based learning component, and you heard one of the students mention it. There is a lot less direct instruction, meaning thirty students in desks facing forward for forty-eight minutes while the teacher talks to them, and there's a lot more five minutes of that and then breaking that room into a completely different configuration for small group work and individual work and one-on-one instruction. So it's one component, the rooms need to typically be slightly larger and the furniture needs to accommodate that style of learning. The project Lead the Way curriculums are completely different, that's integration of different subject matters and those really require larger commitments of square footage and infrastructure to support them. Another piece, I think I would say, is just the academy concept as a whole, and I can't speak to the specifics of how that program functions here, but just that concept and how it has, wasn't even a concept in twentieth-century, I believe you described, learning versus twenty-first century. So those are a few things, I'm sure there are more, and I would encourage other team members here to chime in where appropriate. I will say there too are SGI, small group instruction spaces. We have those scattered throughout, that is integrating learners that may need additional support. Intervention is a concept that's used a lot now, where a student is pulled out and is given dedicated instruction in an area of need. You don't take that student across the building, you take them out of a class into a small space adjacent to learning environments and you do that work there. Collaboration spaces are critically important. This is not making, again, a teacher take an entire class across a building or down a hall to engage in a flexible collaborative and learning environment. We are integrating them into the academic spaces as much as possible to allow that direct instruction to occur, but the flexibility for that teacher to, to really adapt the way they instruct to the way students want to learn in the twenty-first century.
And Rob, I think Peg can also expand on that and how they would utilize those spaces.
So, part of what we're looking at is how do we co-locate throughout the building small group work, personalized learning with large group work? So, for instance, we're looking, we want to create opportunity for flexible space so that a, if you have, for instance, two AP psych teachers and they decide that they want to work with a small group of students, one of the teachers wants to work on, on small group writing, you could have another teacher doing interactive teaching or working with a large group at the same time. Currently, we're kind of, we're completely confined to that rigidity of our space, so twenty-first century learning, learning is really the entire space, including hallways, corridors, being learning spaces. And so in order to do that and create the kind of designers and innovators and entrepreneurs, critical thinkers, we have to have space that can be flexible, adaptable and move on a Johnny-on-the-spot way of, of operating.
Thank you.
I'll just respond, some things that, that were highlights for me and what you addressed, Matt, and now followed up with Principal Peg Schumacher's comments is, I liked when you said that in looking at the design and layout, that you were looking at the way teachers teach. So fundamentally, this has evolved out of what literally happens in the dynamics between educators and their students. This is a school, not barracks. It'd be easy to build barracks and everybody would have whatever their allotted space, but it has to be a space that, that provides that flexibility for the kind of interaction that you're talking about. And I like that point. And as long as I'm on a roll, I like, I like the idea of, there is flexibility in both plans for the middle school and the high school, so that we're not going to get locked in anywhere where, oh, we, we need to go up or sideways or whatever, if and when our population grows. What I, my takeaway from the growth in our school system was that it was going to be a steady one percent, maybe one plus, and I've heard that repeated several times, so that's kind of what I'm going with. And I like the idea of your expression that the building finishes together, which talks about a sense of, of, you know, you know, a coherency and a, and a design and a pace that everything will have a proper finishing patina, if you will, when you're done. And also, you emphasize the fact that as far as the auditorium, we're going to enhance what is needed there. And I'm mentioning that because I know, we keep saying a year ago, a year ago, and the auditorium was kind of dangling out there on its own, but I, definitely that would fit in with my desires for what's going on with the school. Thank you.
Jamie, I have questions on the minutes with the city. And I don't know if anybody would be able to speak to some of those, but maybe I'll just throw a couple of them out and we'll see if that's something we need to follow up on later. One of them was point two dash oh nine, where it says twenty percent of the site must be open green space per zoning code. Does the city require that on existing sites?
They do, and this site is deemed redevelopment, so that will be a requirement.
Does the size of the redevelopment impact how much of the site has to comply with the green space requirements or is it just any development or don't we know that?
I don't know that for sure. I believe the twenty percent is their target, and the only reason green has a question mark on it is because we got into the, a bit of a discussion if synthetic turf is green or not, because it generally does infiltrate water through it, which is their goal with green space. And so, the civil engineer that we're partnering with has really done a lot of research on that and generally, it's been accepted by most communities that turf, synthetic turf is green space. But again, I think the city wouldn't commit to that because they hadn't seen the research and reviewed it, so.
What, what page are you on?
I'm on the minutes, on the very front of the...
The minutes?
So it'd be tab one.
The minutes from the city. So, right behind the first page will say meeting... So, right behind the first page will say meeting minutes. And then it's details of the...
Thank you.
You bet. Second question, I know I saw something about the SAC fees in here. Why, I thought SAC fees were just part of initial development. Are they, is this something that the city requires for additions, renovations? Or is it the size of the scope of our work that determines that? Or where does that?
So, fees in general, the, the most significant fee is the building permit itself, which you saw line itemed out. That is a direct correlation between cost and value of a project and a building permit. So, that is spreadsheeted and is included in, in the project based on that. The other two pieces is a sewer connection fee. And Tim, please, you were, Tim paid really close attention when we talked fees.
I'm sure he did.
So, please jump in if I don't get this correct. Sewer connection fee was another critical one. And then the final one is some fees associated with their engineering services that would be required, which are carried within the soft cost side of the budget. Are those the three main categories, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, I think those are the main ones. There, there are no impact fees with this, like we had with River Crest, because it is a redevelopment site. So, there are no impact fees. But as Matt mentioned, the, the building permit fees, sewer connection fees, that type of thing are going to be, those will be required.
Somebody else can have a turn. I'm sure I'll come back.
All right. We, we have a couple of questions, again, from our public. And one had to do with an area they felt, thought was very important and currently underserved, and that's our vocational trades. And can you point out what, what would be done there? Is it a major renovation, minor, moderate? And...
Yeah, so the vocational trades in general, the, the thought is the spaces are quality spaces. Really, the, the investment in those is going to be in improving the HVAC electrical infrastructure, along with improving finishes within them. So, it's considered a minor renovation, not because of its level of importance by any stretch, but because of the fact that the, the general square footages and configurations of the rooms were, were good. And they were enhanced in the latest project. So, the last, my rec, my recollection is, one of the, the latest projects was actually expanding those trade curricular courses with this piece of the building and adding autos altogether to the building. So, those enhancements were made of square footage. Now, it's more of reinvesting in HVAC and enhancing the electrical infrastructure within those spaces. And again, I would defer anything else functionally to building leadership.
The, the other piece is the addition of the AV studio, which is part of our tech education program. So, that is actually an additional space that we've added.
Minor things, new dust collection and welding exhaust are also included.
Comment and a couple of questions. First, as far as you'd list, or rather, sharing the access, that additional lane to the high school? Fantastic. I didn't see anything, at least maybe I just missed it. Was there any consideration for the middle school from a roadway access perspective?
You know, we did not at this point. We are independent of this process. Steve is studying different potential site solutions for how do we stage 45 buses and work with, I don't know, how many cars did we count? Can't even count them. There's so many, probably. So, we're, we're looking at solutions. They're not connected to the referendum right now, but independent of this effort. We are working with Tim and trying to explore some solutions there.
And then Nick, with regards to the discussion with the city, was there any discussion on splitting some of those costs from a roadway improvement?
I saw that the minutes said that they don't have money in the budget for roundabout. That was one of the recommendations that they had.
When we, when we met with the city, we specifically asked that. They had done a traffic study about a year ago on that site. We're still trying to get a handle on that. We prefer to try to use the traffic studies they've already had done instead of spending another 20 or $30,000 to do a study on something that was done just a year ago. And so, once we, from what I understand, from that traffic study, it didn't call for a roundabout in, in that study. But we did ask the city, you know, roadway improvements, you know, how does that work? And, you know, that, that's probably going to be an ongoing discussion. But I would say typically, the school district usually bears that burden. In the end, it's the taxpayers that bear that burden, whether they're city taxpayers or school district taxpayers. It's basically, you know, one and the same. So, I, I would assume that road improvements are going to be, going to be ours to pick up the expense on.
All right. Well, we have lots of questions from the audience. And I hope I didn't overpromise that we would get to every question unless folks are willing to stay here till 11:00 tonight. But a couple of the questions that I had, I see that our audience members also have. And if you could, Matt, please address, you know, the cost breakdown in terms of square footage costs. We've got minor renovation, moderate, major, and then new construction.
Sure.
And how that translates? Because they also want the question, the answer to include the infrastructure, utilities and so forth. So, if you could explain that, please?
Sure. And I will say the budgets as developed are relatively complex in that we can't just say renovation cost X. So, the way these were developed is electrical infrastructure, for example, that we need across the entire building. Electrical service improvements, replacement of aging panels within the building, for example. Those are line item dollars included in an infrastructure improvement category. They're not a investment or improvement that's carried in a cost per square foot basis across the entire building. So, it's a little tough to say minor renovation is X or Y at this point, because some of those existing infrastructure improvement pieces are, are included as line items, not in the specific budget areas. Another good example of that is on the HVAC side, the boiler and chiller plant. That is being really a new boiler plant or expansion of, Randy, if I remember correctly?
Well, getting rid of the old steam boiler plant.
Yep. Replacement of the, the current steam boiler plant and then replacement of that with a hot water system.
Right, to go to high efficiency hot water.
So, that's a dollar amount carried in the overall budget. It's not allocated across. So, it's kind of a long answer, but I don't, I can't simply say cost per square foot of renovation is X, because we would do not factor in the existing infrastructure improvements when we look at things on a cost per square foot basis.
Do you have a rule of thumb estimate? I mean, I know that we were using broader numbers back in September, both at the September 2nd workshop, when we had 11 or 12 options that went to 22. And then when we went from 22 options to three in September 29th, we had still numbers that were pretty rough.
I, I don't want to throw, if, if I can avoid it tonight, I'm not going to put cost per square foot numbers out there. We'll do the analysis on these budgets and provide those in response so they're accurate. I, I don't want to, to kind of surmise and quickly do some math here and give an incorrect number. Not avoiding the question, we will do that math and calculation. I just don't want to give an inaccurate number tonight. So, I apologize for not having that available.
All right. I guess a follow-up, it would be my question. And that is, in this whole process of community engagement and the board trying to partner with the community and everything and bring everyone along, I just think integrity is like really important, that we follow through with what we're, what we say. And we said we were going to put a lot of credence in the survey that we did. And the survey, you know, ranges were what they were. The numbers that are coming in here are still at the range, but at the very top end of the range, except, and maybe the subparts, how moving millions around here and there. For instance, the middle school is about 25% over what your rough estimate was. Can you explain the change? Because also the square footage that was being proposed has substantially changed as well. So, if you could talk about that change? And is it a matter simply of subtracting square foot if we think that we don't need that much capacity and just taking a total number of, for at the high school, 77 million, and take away so many square feet and that you get to a number?
So, I guess two, two things. Strategically, there's two ways to go about this, I guess. One would be as a board, say, we want to target a total referendum for the middle school and the high school with a dollar amount. And, and then charge us and the, and the district leadership team to come back with the best-case scenario that meets that dollar amount. And obviously, you'll have to decide if you agree or not, that, that is the best-case way to get there. The other piece would be as a board to specifically target some pieces that you either don't feel are critical at this juncture or not, and ask us to analyze those on a cost basis and bring those back as possible savings. Either of those strategies work well. It's really whichever one you would be most comfortable with in terms of targeting. Stepping back to the cost ranges, we had not, at that point, as we discussed previously, engaged in a high level of detail with civil engineers. And we definitely had not had engineers onsite walking the buildings. So, I think those were areas that have better informed our numbers. I will say, from a process perspective, we also don't put a total number at the bottom that we know you want to see and then work backwards and fill in the numbers above on the prior nine pages to get there. The total at the bottom of the high school spreadsheet is what we truly feel the scope of work as is proposed and demonstrated tonight would cost in $20.17. So, again, just from a, a process perspective and transparency, that is how we do this. We don't work backwards and say, we said it was going to be 86 at the high end. That's the number we're going to show up with tonight. So, the square footage is quite frankly, the largest area of increase in that it directly correlates to the cost. So, if there's a connection between higher, at the high end of the range and being over on the middle school, appropriate comments on both, they both correlate to square footage. The middle school plan as conceived in the survey was a single-story or single-house academic addition. I think as we worked through the discussions, not only reviewing the survey results and working with leadership, the thought is, if it's affordable and if the board supports it, it would be advantageous, we believe, to consider that second house. We think it gives you much better flexibility in the long run. It gives you better ability to get those 13 teachers off carts and into classrooms. And it really continues to build upon the strength of the house, as we've all heard repeatedly, is, is critically important. So, I think that is really both listening to the survey results, understanding middle school is a priority for many people, listening to the community. When we heard, I, I was amazed and impressed how often we heard the middle school's great, don't change it, the house concept works. It's not often you hear that about middle schools. Generally, there's a, a lot of consternation related to that age group. So, it's great to hear that it's working. So, I think the middle school really correlates directly to that second house being added. The high school is a continued development of the plan. The majority of the increased costs there is more new square footage as well. The site is a little bit higher. The below-grade stormwater detention is a cost that we had always assumed was there. It is higher than I think we had assumed in the first case. And then two other little pieces is, when we broke it out for the survey, we had a base project for the high school, the auditorium piece and the athletic piece. We acted as, because we were evaluating so many options and, and not an excuse, we didn't really say, how much of this athletic piece would we really want to be in the first question? So, that if, if you go with a second question for the fields and it's not successful, that you could still do it in the future? We didn't look at it that way. We just said fields were a range, auditorium was a range. So, as you saw in those budgets, when we did the auditorium, fire protection, ceilings, HVAC, those costs, which previously, when we did the survey, were actually in the auditorium question, are now pulled forward into the base question, because it is the appropriate time to do them, is along with the base project. So, a bit of it is just refinement of the budget in terms of getting things positioned where they should be in the direction we're considering now. The majority of it, though, I think, is, is directly correlating to square footage, both reaction from survey and continued development and work with both building-level leadership and district leadership.
All right. And then my final question before I thought, I saw Sandy starting to move towards the mic. I want to give it, but we had certain enrollment targets or capacity targets that we were talking about in the planning stage. And given the changes with the square footage and some additional classrooms, when you finish a, a second story right away, rather than doing it five years from now or 10 years from now, whenever that flexibility requires it, do you have the numbers? Or is that something from administration as far as the impact on capacity? What, what that would do to the current middle school capacity and what it would do to the high school capacity with the proposed plan that you have put forward here tonight?
I will say the middle school's relatively a bit, a bit easier to answer, because we're taking teachers that are on carts and potentially giving them classrooms. So, I don't know that the capacity is truly enhanced by this. One could argue that when you fill these classrooms, that you would just go back to teachers on carts, because the building could support it. I think you could make that argument. I don't know that it's an argument that the board would want to make, but that is the reality. I don't think the middle school, we're not planning on increasing capacity. We're trying to deal with students we have and teachers and staff members that we have on carts now at the middle school. Is that a fair statement, Nick?
But I mean, if you're, if you're inclu, if you're increasing the number of classrooms and we're taking an average number of students per class, I mean, that is affecting the classroom capacity, which was one number. Core capacity is a separate number. I understand that.
The high school, I would say what we're doing with the two-story academic addition is two things. One is we're really looking to simply replace and offset classrooms that are lost in the renovation projects, creating the light courts on the west, remodeling for science labs, remodeling for math classrooms and collaboration spaces. We lose classrooms there. On the east and the ramp section, we actually lose quite a few classrooms. There's a lot of classrooms packed into that end of the building. And to address the academy appropriately, we feel we need that square footer. So, we're losing classrooms there. The other piece of that high school equation and scenario is, remember back to the needs analysis, over 80% of your current classrooms were being used beyond the recommended 80% utilization ratio, or 82% utilization ratio. So, we aren't replacing classrooms one-to-one, because the reality is the classrooms as are currently being used, 80-plus percent of them are already being used more than they should. So, there are more classrooms at the high school, because we need more to try to get that utilization ratio back to something that is, was, is within a generally accepted guideline for how often a classroom is used.
All right.
Does that help, Jamie?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll have more here, but from the audience and whatnot, but I'll open it up.
I got a list of stuff that I can do.
Okay. Some of them have been addressed. Here's a question just about traffic patterns, you know, and if the major parking lot in the final design ended up being on the north side of the building? I, I don't know if that's considered major. Do you know how it breaks out, number of parking spaces? And then what does that do to traffic on the north side of the high school, which is a very residential neighborhood?
I think there, there's no doubt that positioning parking on, on the northeast side of the site would increase traffic on the east-west street on the north side of the site. There's no doubt about that. I don't know the specifics on breakdown. You know, we've been concentrating at this point more on total quantity target of 1,000, not the specific breakout. And when we do start to look at getting all of the, considering the athletics into this, there's not a lot of flexibility, as you can see. So, the, the strategy here is that we, and a bit of this will be operational in nature. Let's say the district would decide that the parking at the northeast side, which will have an impact, traffic impact potentially in the neighborhood, they could easily say this is staff parking, for example. We assume staff are going to drive slower and safer and be a bit more courteous to the neighborhood as they come into the site. And you could, if you want to, operationally limit your student parking potentially to the front or something like that. So, I think there's operational considerations. I, I don't think we can say that putting a larger parking lot here is not going to increase traffic. It's not fair to say that. But I think we need to do the best we can to operationally control who is using this. I think part of the other benefit of this is that the more traffic we do bring to the north side of the site, the less potential congestion we're going to have on mine. So, there is an advantage to moving parking to two sides of your site, because that will disperse the traffic a bit better if we have some more park, more parking available on the north than we currently do.
All right.
I mean, just operationally speaking, having that many people arriving and leaving at any site at those specific times, you know, kids are arriving at, kids and staff are arriving at, what, 6:30 to 7:15? And they're all, I shouldn't say all, whoever has extracurriculars or after-school activities isn't necessarily leaving, but that same amount of students are leaving after school dismisses. So, I mean, we're going to have this problem if we, if we relocated it anywhere. If we went down to Red Brick, we would have that problem. I mean, there's just, there's going to be capa, site capacity problems at those specific hours. And you're right. I mean, we're going to have to manage, manage it as a district.
Sandy, I'm thinking of maybe we take a short break at some point, but I want to get your question in, so I don't...
You don't want to take my question right now, Jamie?
Well, then let's break it up, maybe ask a few now and then more later.
How many do you want me to ask?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'll, I'll just, I'll just do a couple of things here, observations. I remember when this plan, with the new addition there, was first proposed at a meeting, I don't remember which meeting it was, but it was proposed as illustrative purposes only. It was used, it was put in so that we would have something to show to the public, that this is a possibility. I believe that what we've ended up with is the same thing that we started out with. And it was my understanding that what we started out with could be changed and proved upon, made better, reformatted. And it doesn't look like that's happened. It looked like this is what we got to begin with. Now, my question is this. As I'm looking at this plan, I'm seeing the door, the front door where everybody would come in. Everybody coming into this building to go to something in the auditorium is going to have to walk through this cafeteria. This really, I'm having a real problem with this, with the design. 70... Seven to eight hundred students in this cafeteria, that many tables, are you going to move the tables every single time you have something going on in the auditorium or where people, you get, how many, how many seats, our auditorium has, what, seven hundred seats?
Well, every night the tables get moved because the floors get scrubbed anyway, so they...
Say that again?
Every night the tables get moved because the floors get scrubbed after, at night, they get cleaned.
Okay.
So, if there was an event at the auditorium, you know, we can leave a couple of rows of tables out if we're worried that it's going to be too tight or something along those lines, but, yeah, that's...
And people coming in and out of the building during the day are going to have to walk through the cafeteria with all those students in there at lunchtime to get to anywhere else in the building. So that's one problem I'm having with the design. And there may be very good reasons to leave it the way it is, I'm just raising my issues. Another problem that I'm having is the location of these lockers. You heard this young woman stand up here today and say, and the gentleman too, talked about how difficult it is to get through that hallway, the original hallway. Honestly, I don't see adding this locker corridor in there as a link from east to west. If you line up all those lockers in there, you're not creating an easier way for anybody to access anything. You're creating another bottleneck. All those students are going to be stopping at their lockers if they use them, but of course, when we were at Minnetonka, do any of you guys remember what Minnetonka told us? I got it. They said, "The kids don't use the lockers because it's not cool." That's a quote from the guy at Minnetonka. I'm questioning why that, why you're envisioning that being a corridor when it's going to be full of lockers and kids.
If I can quickly touch on a couple things. I think your first comment that this was illustrative of a potential solution is still valid. There's, this is a concept, given time constraints and how we're moving through this process, we're using it to make sure that we have appropriate square footages for things such as classrooms, cafeteria seating areas. We work with Peggy and the leadership team to make sure that we have the quantities and types of spaces necessary. So it's really more representative pre-referendum effort to show how a potential solution could look and work. I can say with confidence, we've never proposed a referendum solution that has been built exactly how it looks. It doesn't happen. There is a significant amount of additional design, detail, engagement with staff, engagement with the city, engagement with you as a board, to really build this plan out further. So, big picture, your first name is correct, it still is, it looks similar, and that's really done because it's an in-process effort to show what the building could be.
But you're not going to be changing the location of the cafeteria for traffic flow or those lockers, those are going to remain there.
We could, if we get through this process post-referendum, the goal, if we work with staff and Peggy and we come to the board and say, "There's a better solution for lockers, here it is, what do you think? It still meets the budget, it meets a square footage target, we think it's going to function better, and all groups of stakeholders feel it's a better solution," there's no reason why we wouldn't consider that. It happens on almost every project. The only way to prevent that would be to go through a full design process pre-referendum so that every stakeholder was heard and every staff member got their input. And that's not realistic, you don't want to invest in that, and we don't think you should. The other piece, I think, is with these corridors, scales deceiving here. This is a really significant corridor that's being proposed. There's about fifteen feet, if I remember correctly, from this wall to this locker.
And give us an example of what are the width of our hallways currently?
Your corridors with lockers, I believe, are ten feet clear, correct? Or less?
On each side of, ten feet on each side of the locker banks? No, the lockers are...
Right, yeah, right now the corridors are ten feet from, from the locker face to the other locker. And, and on the sides, on the thicker side of the, of this locker bay, it's, it's about sixteen feet clear. And the space between the lockers is about, right now, it's about seven or eight feet between the lockers and we could, usually that's tighter. So we felt we were pretty liberal on, on the spacing within this space. Enough, in other words, enough space that's, that students, a significant amount of students could be between the lockers and not flow out into the, into the quarter.
Okay, so how much space is on the backside of the lockers then?
On the backside, it's eight feet.
Okay.
So, it, and it looks like, and it looks, it does look like it, it could be congested, and we assume it will be congested, but, and we've done this in other projects, the congestion, when you kind of concentrate it in a space that's outside of the academic space, it generally quiets up the rest of the school. So you are going to have periods, beginning of the day, the end of the day, where it's going to be congested. But we think there's enough space to, to help that and also the benefit of taking those corridor, or taking those lockers out of the corridor is going to help academically.
No, I get that. The lockers coming out of the corridors is a good thing. How much square feet did you say is on this side, sixteen feet?
Sixteen on the bottom and eight on the top.
If I may follow up on Sandy's comment with regards to the lockers, I was actually talking to my son who attends the high school. And we talked about the lockers and again, the comments at Minnetonka. Are, are you seeing in your other projects where like, lockers are simply not being included anymore?
We haven't seen it to go that far, and this proposal actually is not to construct a full-size locker for every student. We actually are considering that we will probably do half-height lockers or some combination of half-height and full-height lockers through here. So this is actually narrower than it used to be because we're not proposing a typical full twelve-inch wide, fifteen-inch deep, six-foot tall locker for every student. And that came directly from district and building level leadership, that the goal would be to, to minimize the number of lockers and look at an operational way to give students a secure place for things. So that has been considered. We haven't seen somebody go all the way to say, "No lockers at all."
Do you think that that's coming?
I think it could, and we've actually talked that there's a plenty of potential, that the, this whole space is really master plan, that if you want to put more classrooms or learning environments, if the lockers go away, you'd still have natural light, and this would be a very easy remodeling to accommodate that.
Okay. I see that the outdoor learning spaces don't have doors, how are they supposed to get out there?
Please ignore the doors. I will say upfront, every door is not shown here, I promise you that. There will be two doors, the doors will be swinging into the building, so you cannot get locked into those. It's a good observation, but don't worry, we will get that covered.
But which, where would they be, off of, off of one of the side hallways, on the ends, off the locker corridor?
I don't think we've identified exactly where yet.
Yeah, I think that's kind of the level of detail. This is very, very schematic right now.
Okay, all right.
And when we get into the detail, we'll, we'll want to run, you know, talk through with administrative staff, the best locations for that kind of thing.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to ask for now, Jamie, thank you.
Okay, well, since we've been going two hours, why don't we just take a five-minute break? And then, at the end of the break, maybe Brian, I don't know if this is a good time for you to address, you know, the financing, because I think we've had a question from the audience and maybe, or other people also have questions about that. So the tax impact would be good to address when we come back from break. So, five-minute break. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting. We remain in informal session, and I'm going to have Brian Brewer come up to the front. We're going to address financing. But since the last question was about parking, and now you've, you've changed spots, but just, there was a question and I missed it, but it was in here, and just a good time to address it is, this, we talked about parking on four sides of the building. Now, is a parking ramp, something that's multi-level, is that something that would be considered, or did you consider that as far as freeing up green space and how is that relative to cost effectiveness?
We did not because of the economics. Parking structures are significant costs and they're very expensive, not only to construct first cost, but also to maintain moving forward. So, it was purely a cost consideration.
And I think that the city was looking at doing a parking ramp and their estimate they got was like ten thousand dollars per parking space or something.
That's light.
I've heard twenty-five, as high as twenty-five.
Okay, maybe, maybe I was using outdated numbers, but anyway, I just, all right. Brian, why don't you talk about, now, with the different numbers that were proposed, I believe, for the academic additions and renovations, you know, we're looking at about eighty-seven and a half million, and then, between the auditorium and the athletic, it's two-point-four and nine-point-six, so we're looking at about another twelve million. So, why don't you talk about what the tax impact would be and how you, how that compares to maybe our previous referendum?
Okay. Good to see everyone again. Brian Brewer from Robert Baird. As you recall throughout the discussions, the debt structure, and as I mentioned earlier to the gentleman's question, the plan is a general plan, and we're currently looking at phasing the financing in with the borrowing plan, or with the built, construction plan, so not needing to borrow all of the debt at the very beginning. However, one of the conversations with the finance committee and the board along the way will be, "How much do we lock in? If we, if we collectively believe rates will move higher in seventeen and eighteen, you know, we, we will run some scenarios, some models to say, "If we lock in X, here's what it can look like," and then so on and so forth. So, there are a lot of moving parts still to go on the financing, but I do want to start with what I've assumed so far. And it's a twenty-two-year repayment, so staging the borrowings over the next three years, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. The final payment in 2038. The interest rate assumption is generally, I've been trying to hover about a one percent above current so that I can, because I can't predict exactly where rates will be at the time that you are ready to finance, I'm trying to build in that planning cushion so that, you know, should rates move higher, you, your mill rate estimates have encompassed that potential. What that means, though, just as a talking point for you, if, if rates, if you were magically able to lock in all financing, given that same time period, at the one percent lower, which is current market, that, on each ten million dollars worth of financing, that's approximately one-point-three million dollars worth of interest cost avoidance. So...
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, so, so, the, the planning estimates, the mill rates that I'll talk about, the mill rates that were in the, the survey, were based on interest rate estimates that are approximately one percent higher than current market. If rates did not change and you were able to lock in your financing at current levels, you, you would be about one percent lower on the financing. And what that translates into, why that's important, is that on, for each ten million dollars worth of financing over that twenty-year period, it reduces your interest cost by one-point-three million dollars over the repayment term. So in your scenario of eighty-seven to ninety-nine, you're looking at, you know, somewhere between eleven to thirteen million dollars that you could potentially avoid in financing costs, interest costs, should rates stay at their historically low levels. So, with, with that knowledge, the, a conservative interest rate, or a conservative property valuation growth estimate, currently, the last two years, the district has grown over six percent each of the last two years.
So a total of twelve percent over two years?
It's, it's compounding, but yes. And then, currently, what our models are using is a two percent for three years and then one percent thereafter. So, relative to where you've been, very conservative. If you get another six percent at the beginning of this, that will make those mill rate estimates go down even quicker. But again, you've also come out of, you know, five years prior to the last two or three that you had negative. So, we wanted to be conservative. Ideally, the growth continues as, as strong and as steady as it has in the, in the recent years coming out of the recession, and that will further reduce the mill rate estimates that we're using. With those factors, the conservative planning interest rates, the conservative growth assumption, the phased financing plan over the next three years, for the, generally speaking, if you're in that eighty-seven to ninety-nine range, you're generally right around a one, one cent per thousand on the mill rate of an increase over current, okay? That's an important factor, it's why you put in your survey, that you're, the district, one of the key benefits of the timing of this discussion in the community is that there are pending drops in your, in your referendum-approved debt payments from the prior building projects at the, with the referendums in two thousand, in two thousand and seven, I believe it was, for Rivercrest. You, we have staged reductions in, in those debt payments, which we're, we're structuring this new debt, hypothetical new debt, around so that as, as it drops down, we'll fill in a bigger payment, bigger payment, bigger payment, such that the increase over the current commitment for referendum-approved debt, which is currently ninety-seven cents on your, your total school mill rate, we're talking about a, for each million in this range of eighty-seven to ninety-nine, it's going to be approximately a penny more per million. So, you know, if you're at eighty-seven, you're going to be approximately eighty-seven cents per thousand, and if you're at ninety-nine, you're going to be somewhere at around ninety-nine. I'd have to run the, the model again at that specific number to see if it's, if it holds true on that penny per million, but it's going to be right in that ballpark of a penny per million over the current amount.
A penny per thousand?
I'm sorry, yeah, no, no, yeah, so a penny per thousand for each million of borrowing. So if you're evaluating ranges in between, let's say, let's say you say, "Well, eighty-seven we agree on, but let's go to ninety-five." What is that number? Well, it's going to be something like eight cents per thousand to go from eighty-seven to ninety-five.
And similarly, if we were to use some of our capital reserve fund to reduce what we're buying in bonds and went down to eighty-three or eighty-four?
It would be something like a two- or three-cent, or whatever you said, three- or four-cent reduction, so about eighty-three or eighty-four cents per thousand on the mill rate, increase over current.
And Brian, when you say penny per thousand, you're saying thousand dollars of home assessed value?
Yes, sorry, I didn't, so, some of you have been in these conversations with me, so yes, I should have clarified. A mill rate is quoted as a, as a dollar per thousand in property tax. So when I say ninety-seven cents per thousand, that's ninety-seven cents per thousand dollars of property value, and it's fair market property value too. That's another thing to be clear on because school districts set their mill rates on the fair market property value of the school district, and then the local jurisdictions, translate it based on assessed valuation.
Okay, so doing the hypothetical, and I'd heard statistic, I know that these things got to be updated, but if the average home in Hudson is two-hundred-and-forty thousand, so then you take that two-hundred-and-forty times the proposed, and if it was eighty-three after deducting some funds that we have in the capital, that would be roughly, get us to about two-hundred dollars a year then?
Correct, so you'd be at one-sixty-six and, what did I say, forty? Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, so...
All right. Now, somebody else had said, you know, about being clear on the full financial picture. And when it comes to these referendums, you talk about the impact of the tax increase on the mill rate for the project itself, but operational costs are not figured in that, correct?
Correct. This is, this is the debt, the increase on your property taxes related to the new principal and interest related to the debt.
All right, so then I'll turn to Nick or Tim Erickson, our finance director, have the estimates from our survey, which, what was formerly known as option three, I'm now calling it the project, prior to it being on a referendum. But the proposed project, you know, what is that impact on the operational cost? It was four-hundred to five-hundred thousand on the survey. Has that changed based on what's being proposed here tonight by Bray?
We, so, yeah, that four-fifty to five-fifty was developed on the concept. We're still talking concept here, as Matt mentioned, so at this point, that hasn't changed. We may look at that again based on where we get with final design, but I would say we're probably certainly within the range of being, being pretty close to what that would be. A lot of it is, you know, certainly facilities and grounds costs, you're adding, adding some square footage, et cetera. So, you know, that's basically where, where costs are falling, falling in utilities, that type of thing.
All right. And that's can't be determined at this time because we're talking about impact on future budgets and depends on tax base and all kinds of other factors that are hard to pinpoint then.
Right. We can, we can, as we get closer, we can work, we can work a number in.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the financing while Brian's up here then, that anybody has? I think you answered. So, if we were to go even on that lower end of the range, I mean, from what was put on the survey, I think we had seventy-nine million, and what would that, if you, and then took off some funds for what's in the capital reserve or used it for the athletic fields and didn't put a question on, I mean, there's all kinds of variables here, but even if you got to eighty, it's still that one-to-one rough correlation?
Again, pending the assumptions of timing of financing, and, you know, as you, as you see the trend in that range on the survey, it, when I say approximately one cent per thousand dollars of property value, it's, you know, as, as you borrow less and less, that impact can be a little under a penny per... it's, you know, as, as you borrow less and less, that impact can be a little under a penny per thousand versus a little over a penny per thousand. So, I'm being a little evasive in your answer, because it really depends on a lot of the assumptions of when we actually do the financing, and what the final rates would, would be at that time.
All right, thank you. And no other questions then on the financing? All right, thanks, Brian. Now, I assume that Matt's going to have a lot more questions, so maybe he should take the mic back. And you're welcome to stay up here in the metal chair here, or the metal chair's out in the audience, either, either one. So, all right, do we have other, other questions? I think we've now addressed the ones that came from the audience, and if there were more, we could always answer those online, because I don't have an interest in keeping everyone till eleven. Unless somebody makes a motion to that effect, we'll, we'll stay here till eleven. But just continue with the questions regarding the proposed plans, and suggested changes or directions. Because eventually, before we end this meeting, we want to discuss next steps. Obviously, the next proposed step was to, at our next regular meeting, January twelfth, have something that would be a referendum resolution. That was our goal, that we set back on November ten. And so, tonight is, the idea is to ask the hard questions that gets us to that end goal.
I just have three more questions.
Good.
This is good. Back to the cafeteria. How many seats do we currently have in our cafeteria, does anybody know? Currently?
We have it here, we'll look for it as, we have it in the needs assessment, we'll, we'll look for that while you ask your next one.
Then the next question, in, in looking at this plan and observing the way the serving area is set up, do you envision, do we currently have one line for serving all these kids running through the cafeteria? So they go get their food, and then they sit down in the same room? This looks to me like they're going to have to get served and then walk backwards to where the cafeteria is, so what am I missing?
They're about six fifty, Sandy.
Six hundred and fifty kids?
Six fifty, and about a hundred with additional tiled space in the commons. So, about seven fifty with the common space this year, and the current cafeteria.
So how would they, how would the kids serve here? Where is the serving line?
We have not worked out the details of that. I did review this plan specifically with the food service director, and there was a couple of thoughts she had related to how this would work. One of them was, she did suggest that there would potential, potentially be value in a remote serving station, meaning, creating a serving station potentially out of some of this block of space shown as cafe concession school store. That is relatively common now, they do remote serving locations to disperse those students throughout a larger space. But otherwise, she did not feel at all concerned. She said, right now, they're doing, you know, five to six hundred students. I don't know how many lines, I don't recall, she didn't tell me how many lines they're currently feeding through. Most of the students, if, if we remember, we will have students coming, I'll say the right-hand side of the plan. That's our academy students' art business ed. Still, the majority of our students would be in the, in the two-story, proposed two-story academic addition, and then the western single story. So, one of the things we did add intentionally was this, I'll say, kind of bisecting link here that would offer students another choice, another pathway to get from whether they're in the western side, whether they decide to stop at a locker, whether they're in the two-story, that they could make their way to the serving as well, and then come down and in. So we tried to provide as many different connection points to get there. And this sounds crazy, but there's a concept of a scatter system of how you feed students. You really just, to a certain extent, turn them loose into an open area where they move, they scatter into the serving area. They would have walls, it would be enclosed, you come in at a point, you scatter, and then you come back down as you leave and get checked out. It's relatively common, it's an efficient way to serve large numbers of students. What we have now is dedicated square footage to serving, which you have right now. Your dedicated square footage to serving is basically this, and there's a bathroom and some other things carved out of that square footage. So as you can see, we're making a significant investment in increasing the square footage of serving space. Exact line configuration, scatter versus traditional line, remote versus all in one place, still to be determined.
Yeah, that explains it, that, that's, that's a good explanation, I appreciate that, because it wasn't looking. I was looking, how are these kids going to get served in that, in that setting? But with your explanation, I think it can probably work. So that answers that question. And I have, oh, how many current parking spaces do we have, does anybody know?
We have it here in the study. I thought it was, yeah, without the rented spaces, I don't know, Tim, if you've got a better memory for numbers than me, but.
I want to say we've got six seventy-five onsite, roughly.
So the study identified six hundred and fifty-six onsite spaces, so that does not include the spaces rented at the church.
Okay, so we would be improving it substantially?
We're targeting a thousand, yep.
Okay, so that answers that question. And then one last thing. When you were talking, when you were doing the preliminary, talking about the middle school, was there any discussion given at all to, to attempting to use additional space out of Prairie Elementary rather than building two new houses?
We did not consider that at this time.
All right, thank you.
Question on the spaces, the parking spaces, does, does a thousand address the need entirely, or is that a, does that just get us close?
So we have six fifty-six onsite now, plus how many do we rent?
And we lease about one sixty-five now from St. Pat's. So, but that gets us up there.
Substantial.
Will it be enough for your largest event, if you're running, if the stadium ends up here? Probably similar to Newton, you're going to rely a bit on the neighborhood, and you may continue to decide for event purposes, you may want to continue that partnership with the church. But the goal was for day-to-day, which is our main, I think, goal, a thousand feels really good, I think. As a group, we felt that was a good target number.
When I think even, even our large events, I mean, Newton doesn't have anywhere near that level of park, parking. Right now, maybe a hundred spots right off of the, right off of the stadium. So I mean, we would definitely have way more parking for events if we moved fields there, not necessarily that we would, but. And then, day-to-day, we'd have close to twelve hundred spots onsite, which would take care of a lot, we would think, would take care of basically all of our drivers.
If we don't move the athletic fields to the existing high school space, is a thousand too much?
You know, I, I think thousand is an appropriate number. We're looking at a, a capacity seating capacity for the gym at two thousand. And then, any simultaneous use that would be considered along with that two thousand, whether it's some learning opportunity, or potentially, your biggest event would be a show in the auditorium at the same time. I think you try to avoid those, if you've got a big rival basketball game and a show, you try to avoid it. But I think a thousand is a good compromise.
I feel like parking is the one thing that you never hear somebody complain that you have too much of.
Well, I think the big piece with the parking is we're wanting to continue to be better neighbors. And, you know, as we've talked with different people around, around the high school, you know, the goal is to take some of that pressure off the side streets. As you've seen, you know, some of the, the closed side streets have, have requested permit parking by the city, and they've implemented that. So then what happens is our kids just park one further street out, and one further street out, and it just kind of keeps spreading. And so the more that we can house onsite, I think the, the better neighbors we are to the neighborhood.
If I can ask a question?
Yes, Carrie.
It's a, a bit tied in, but in a way, it might be jumping ahead to the next steps. Concern raised by more than one citizen tonight, and certainly a very clear message from the survey, was concerning the athletic fields. I think it, I think it is prudent to allow those in the site plan, but I think a very clear message was that the, the city, or the residents were not willing to, to pay for that right now. So I think it would be wise, as we move forward, to, to look at just the academic additions and renovations, possibly look at a separate question for the auditorium, but I don't know that we, we, as we move forward, would even want to include the question about the athletic fields right now.
That's definitely a question, a discussion we need to have, is to what extent we should have a question on athletics. Clearly, from the survey, if we're going to, you know, abide by what the recommendations were from the survey, that athletic fields at eleven million would not pass. We didn't have on the survey is if we scaled that back, and didn't do them all now, but some type of phased-in approach, at what level it would get supported. We did see big support for revamped auditorium, a better support, I should say, for revamped auditorium than a brand-new auditorium, which is not being considered now, because it was part of a new school. So, I think that's a very valid point, if other members want to weigh in as to where they might be leaning on having any question, or a reduced question, second question, and how that might be possibly combined or separated from an auditorium question.
I'll, I'll have a couple of comments there. I, I do think it, if we do ask a sep- separate question, it would need to be a reduced question, and some sort of a phased approach there. I do have a fear that if we don't include anything, that maybe we're alienating a, a contingency of, of folks that, that, that's very important to, you know? We've had the debate up here about the arts and acad- and athletics being a part of education, right? So, education and the buildings, I think, should be our number-one goal. But I don't want to lose sight that the arts and athletics are paramount to the education that kids get. And we see that in our schools today, I mean, the numbers that we've been presented in the past, in terms of how many kids participate in the athletics today, as well as the arts in our, our fine programs that we have here. I, I fear that we might be missing at least an opportunity to present a scaled-back question second, secondarily.
Let me ask Matt on that point. Again, just purely from the architectural and the engineering standpoint of economies of scale, and while you're doing, I mean, you're going to be disturbing a lot of ground, a lot of ground, to build all these new parking areas, everything. And what kind of savings are we talking about? And which structures, or which of the athletic fields, do you think it would make sense to do sooner rather than later? From just that standpoint?
I would say the, the one that could potentially benefit most from being constructed at the same time would be a, I'll say, a synthetic turf surface. I'll stop short of saying a stadium. You, you could put a synthetic turf multipurpose soccer football component in the position you would want it for a stadium in the future. The reason I say that phases well is because that surface is a big part and can help with our stormwater management. We would actually bury a lot of stormwater management structures typically below that, cover it in gravel, put the turf on top. We're planning on doing that below-grade stormwater there anyway, but we could complete that installation versus having to strip that soil back and putting the turf down in the future. So even if you wanted to phase in a surface that is master-planned around to add a track, and add bleachers in the future, and add lights, that would be a, a phase to consider. I do think the tennis courts are a bit standalone, that is a logical one, that if you wanted to phase something, you could pull that out and roll that in over time. Same thing with your baseball and/or softball, even if you wanted to phase them in, in terms of initial investment in a natural grass field with the master plan to put turf in, or something of that nature, we can accommodate a lot of that, but I think the natural piece would be to get a multipurpose synthetic surface in a position you want it for a future stadium, at a bare minimum.
Okay, while we're on the subject of athletics, because I think, you know, this is the time to have that discussion, so that we're prepared for January twelfth. Would Nick just save even more money by just putting artificial turf on Newton Field, and not putting any stadium at the high school at all, and making that investment on, I'm just asking the question? Or by messing at all? I mean, we have lots of variables here, and one thing is to do nothing. There's always the do-nothing option. But when it comes to our athletics and the quality of the experience and everything, right now, we've got several deficiencies, if you will, with Newton Field not having locker rooms, not having bathroom facilities, and so forth. And you've already been on record at the September second workshop saying, folks, this is what code says. And this is why we get up to eight million dollars if we start messing with Newton Field. So, there's various stages of what we can do. But if we say, we want to keep Newton Field where it is, but we want to upgrade it, how much are we spending there versus putting in something now at the, at the high school?
At, at a high level, the, the cost of the rug, the, the piece of synthetic surface that you're going to put down at either site's going to cost the same. The, the cost of the concrete curb that's poured around the perimeter to attach that to is going to cost the same at either site. In reality here, because we're going to need to do below-grade stormwater detention, whether we put a synthetic surface over it or not, there, there's a bit of an advantage to considering that here. But that doesn't mean it automatically becomes a stadium. The track cost, the bleacher cost, the support building cost associated with a bleacher component really triggers it. If you said we want to put synthetic turf at Newton, not invest in bleachers, leave them as is, just put synthetic surfacing in, it would be a cost, it would be a little bit more, because you're going to need to do the below-grade stormwater work at that site as well. But the real triggering event, I think, as we talked about at Newton, is when we look at those bleachers and try to expand that capacity, it's going to trigger the need for bathrooms. And we don't have those there within five hundred feet to take advantage of in the existing building. So it, it is a bit compounding. It compounds in all these different scenarios, and it's a difficult decision, I know you're going to have to make, related to the athletic piece. But what we wanted to do, regardless of which direction you as a board and the, and the community eventually decide to go with this, if you say we want to base the plan on the future ability to put our athletic fields here onsite, that is enough direction that we can master plan and budget accordingly, pre-referendum here, to accommodate below-grade utilities and things, as best we can predict what you would need to do in the future to do that work.
So I'm sorry, Matt, so either on the southwest or southeast quadrant, you don't, you don't, at this time, have an estimate for what that would be to put down the artificial turf?
Yep, that is in the, the broken-out line item, the budget for the athletics in town.
So not even to, not to build the stadium, just to put the turf down?
I don't know if the turf is broken out as a standalone number, I, I could get, I definitely can get that for you. Yeah, it's, it's probably turf and stadium in one number, isn't it? Yeah, it's a stadium standalone, light scoreboard sound, so we sure could get you, that, that's a good question, if you just want the cost of, of doing the synthetic surface and not turning it into a stadium day one, we could easily get that for you.
You know, Matt, it's, synthetic turf sounds like a Cadillac option. You know, what, what is the benefit to our community in having synthetic?
You would use that synthetic surface, I'll, I'll say twenty-four-seven, I obviously don't mean that. You would use that synthetic surface constantly, you'd use it in rain events, you'd practice non-stop, you'd run youth football right up to varsity football, right up to FIAED, starting before or after that. So, again, it's an expense, I don't personally look at it as an extravagance, especially on a site that is a bit restricted in terms of the, the real estate you have available. Really is, the inverse would be to suggest we need to go buy sixty acres of land somewhere, take that cost compared to potentially investing in a piece of synthetic turf that you can use constantly. You don't have to say no to the neighborhood kids who want to come over and play on this piece of grass, because it needs to be kept in good shape for FIAED or practice. It, it really becomes more of a true community amenity, because you don't have to limit the use if you do have it.
Yeah.
You don't have to rest it like we do Newton Field, all right?
Yeah, looking at Minnetoka High School, my gosh, I mean, they've got turf everywhere, and talk about a twenty-four-seven high school, just, it's fantastic.
Well, I think, yeah.
Three sixty-five, right?
You can plow it, that's another good point, you can plow the snow off of it and, and use it as green space in the winter.
And I think it's important to look at, if you wanted to scale it back, by taking baseball, softball out of there, tennis courts out of there, you know, if you just wanted to start with the stadium piece and then phase in the other ones, you could reduce the question from nine point six down to six point six million, or something along those lines, and then phase other ones in, or, depending on what you wanted to do.
I have always been a proponent of artificial turf, because I thought it was an extravagance, like, like he said. But after I went to Minnetoka and talked to the athletic director over there, who was so helpful, and he showed us those fields, and explained how much they are used by not only the kids in the school district, but the community, I came out of that with a completely different, changed opinion of artificial turf, and if we can afford it, we need to do it. We've got a limited green space, we've got limited space for the kids to be outside. If you artificial turf this stuff, you're right, you can use it all the time, and the community can use it, too. Right now, you can't do that. And I just received a call this week from a parent who, whose kids are in lacrosse in Hudson. And they can't, she said they're trying to get some springtime at Newton Field for these kid, lacrosse kids to practice, and they've been told they cannot have Newton Field in the spring because of the limited amount of time that that field can be used, because of the grass. And I thought, well, let's spend a million dollars and put the turf down, because then the kids can use it all the time. So I, I have completely changed my mind about artificial turf, I'm all in favor of it.
Well, my observation would be, I mean, programmatically, it would seem, if we're going to put artificial turf anywhere, it would seem to make sense to put it at the high school where your most students are, in the district.
Right, where the kids can walk out the door and use it.
And where you have your most teams that are generated from there, and could, could be using it. But I guess what that would do is, it would be a commitment. Does that mean that we decommit to putting in? Does that mean that we decommit to putting in lockers and $8 million worth of improvements at Newton? I mean, what's our, what's our bottom number? If we start messing with seating capacity, that triggers the bathrooms and then it'd be nice to have real locker rooms for our teams and so forth at where they're playing football. So what would that do?
I'd have to look back at the previous and if people have them with you or recall the previous numbers or dollars explored for Newton. I would say those, there was no extravagance built into the Newton rebuild option as previously explored either. And the biggest difference in cost is the size and need for bathroom. And the main thing, even just taking locker rooms out, we don't need locker rooms if we stay here. We have locker rooms that would be, support this building. We're going to try to use as many toilets as we can if we can get within 500 feet with those bleachers, using the existing building bleacher, bathrooms to offset that. So if anything is a difference, it's even just the cost of building those locker rooms is a difference and that's relatively significant in and of itself.
So that 500-foot that you just ruled, that you just mentioned, seemed to make more sense for arguing for the southeast quadrant then? Where we've got entrance into the gymnasium, you're going to have locker rooms. That's where our locker rooms are.
That's a concept you could look at. The other option would be, we're looking at remodeling these bathrooms. We could consider remodeling them and moving them to an outside wall that had a, we've done dual-purpose inside/outside doors that would give the ability to offset some fixtures that way as well.
Sounds like we're getting the general lean of the school board. But one of my questions too was that small yellow square where the stadium is at, and then I looked in the budget, that was 1.5 million just for that little concession building?
Correct. And that's because it's almost all plumbing.
Okay. But again, you move that closer to the building and then you got some savings.
The closer we get, the more fixtures we can take advantage of, the less we would build. The other option always is, and it's not, it doesn't work, you can't really do this pre-ref referendum, is your local municipality can override the building official and say that you would need to, you would bring in portable fixtures for your major events where you're going to fill your bleachers. The argument is, we build our bleachers for two or three or four or five games a year. Why should we need to invest in all these plumbing fixtures that we're only going to need by code three, four, or five times a year? You can never get that variance granted until you've passed a referendum and developed detailed plans and gone to the city. So it's an impossible assumption and it's a risk to take to say, we're going to get that variance, cut that cost in half because we don't need the bathrooms. So we would argue, this budget is based on a very recent project just finished in Appleton at Lawrence. It's an outdoor athletic support building. And that building even had donated plumbing fixtures from the Kohler Company included. So they're difficult numbers to defend publicly because they don't make sense. But we have some background and justification for why we're proposing that number.
I still hear the echoes of the gaffs when you explain that revamping Newton would be about 2 million more. I see the range was 10.3 to 11.2 just to revamp the existing and then light our existing baseball and softball versus building all-new for 8.3 to 9 million dollars?
Well, just to clarify, that's not a 1.5 million dollar concession building. That 1.5 million dollars includes the balance of the bathrooms that we can't include count in the building. It includes some storage.
Includes storage and concessions.
So just to clarify, it's not a 1.5 million dollar concession stand because I think, you know, that's kind of what it was alluded to there.
Good point, concessions, toilets, storage.
Yeah, because it might be that we only get to count 10 or 15 toilets inside and we've still got to put 50 outside or 40 outside.
Okay. Couple of other comments. Oh, sorry, Sue, do you want to go? Are you sure? I'm going to jump away from the athletics for just a minute here. Maybe it's all kind of tied together. But just looking at some of the costs for the high school itself, you've got...
What page, Bruce?
I'm looking at page, I guess it'd be page 3.
Tab 9.
Section 9, page 3. Thank you. You've got 5.3 million dollars in site improvements, right? That's going to be there regardless of what the project cost would be, essentially. I mean, it's going to be a number that we're not going to be able to really move the needle on much. Whether it was a one-story or a two-story, you still have these site improvements that are going to be there regardless. So not much, am I correct in that?
Correct, that category and the ones above it generally are a bit of fixed costs associated with getting started. It's a generalization, there may be some that would have a move, but I think that's a very valid point you make.
Okay. Also, just looking at soft costs. Page 9. Thank you. Same section, she's doing good. 10.2, right, for soft costs. Now, you've got 5% in contingencies in there, right? About 3.4. You got a 5% for architectural engineering fee. And then the rest are, I don't want to say, you know, your furnishings allowance that would maybe go down. And then you've got an additional estimated contingency, so you're just over 4 million bucks there. That's not going to really change much either, is it? Other than you might ebb and flow a little bit in that 5% based upon the total price of the package?
Those that are percentages, I would say, would naturally adjust as the numbers above do. But some of the other fixed costs, I feel pretty comfortable saying they would not.
Okay. So you take those items, then you also include like HVAC, right? As well as other needed refurbishments, if you will, to our existing infrastructure? That would potentially come from like the ATS and R report? We're going to be hitting most of those items through this remodel as well, correct?
Yes.
And what would we not be hitting from the ATS and R report? Which maybe would include like roofs, you know, doing some of that work right now?
I think so, we have not done a side-by-side comparison and we'd be happy to do that. I think the roof plan was less a look at just replace every square foot of roof. It was a specific engagement with the district to say which roofs are really good and why replace them. The other piece of it to always consider is replacing roofs is great, but if you replace every roof at the same time, in theory, it means it's going to wear out at the same time. So roofs is one of those few things that if you can get on a cycle of replacing them regularly, not all at once, it is a bit beneficial in terms of your ongoing budgets and future boards as they try to tackle re-roofing projects.
You know, it was just interesting to me to walk through all of these different costs and see some of those fixed costs or costs that are going to be there that you really don't have a lot of control over. So then you start to break it down to what you can control and that's a pretty small number. And when you start to pick away from that dollar figure, you're making major changes to the education that we're able to provide to these kids. The 21st century learning atmosphere, the, you know, collaborative learning centers, et cetera. You know, it starts to become more real around why these costs are all there and what you can and you can't control, regardless of what project you're going to take on at an existing site like we're doing. You know, we're taking some other costs out of the equation like, you know, additional, you know, site fees that we'd have to go buy in an unknown site, et cetera. But it was just an interesting observation as I went through the document here. Because the ATS and R report was what, 30? Well, at the time, it was about 30 million dollars over, spread out over a large number of years.
10 years, I think it was 36 million.
Right, right. So, you know, I mean, there's a lot of advantages that come along with this that we're going to be addressing that as a community, we're not going to have to address over the next 10-year period because we're taking care of them as part of this referendum. Again, some observations.
Can I, Matt, can you tell me each of the figures that you have in here, is there an upcharge for inflation or for unexpected costs? What percentage is that? And is each figure upped that much? There's no, because I don't see a line item in here that says?
It's a good question. These are based, the budgets as presented include and are based on a spring of 2017 bid timeframe. So we have used recent bids and used a 5% inflationary factor to get to.
It's 5%. And that 5% is allowed for inflation over the length of time it takes to get this done and for unexpected things like if you dig in the ground and find something horrible, you have to remediate it?
Separate number, so the numbers you see include the 5% inflation. And then if you go to page 9, I believe it is, of your budget for the high school, as an example.
Got it.
There are line items, two things. There's an estimating contingency that is 1%. That's an acknowledgement that, A, we don't know if inflation truly is 5.5% or whatever it may be. There's risk in inflation, right? Impossible to predict. So that's an acknowledgement of that.
And that's 1%?
Correct. And it's also an acknowledgement that there's no way to get an estimate perfect, that there's going to be some things that were not right on here. We're going to open up a wall and find something we didn't know was there or couldn't have predicted was there at this point. So that's the estimating contingency. Then if you go down further, there's a design-construction contingency. That's the meaningful one for you. That's the one you were just referring to. What happens when we come across something we weren't aware of? We have a 5% protection for the district built into this budget for those situations.
Matt, the escalation that you, inflation that you made reference to, that's per year?
Correct.
Based on the principle being used in that given year?
It is not that specific. It's global. It's applied to construction costs, 5%. We've converted 5 to, on a monthly basis for fractions of years, but it's not broken down as to when those dollars would be expended. It's not extended out to say, we're going to expend 8% theoretically of our budget in 2019. We have not done that. It's inflated to bid date.
And this isn't, you're not saying that this 5% design-construction contingency, that's not 5% every year. That's the total project, a total figure.
It's 5% as an acknowledgement and a bit of a safety net for the district to deal with things that are not predictable during construction.
Okay, thank you.
Best case scenario, you don't need a dollar of it. It's highly unlikely, most projects of this type go through 2% to 3% of that amount. So, not saying you're going to have that left at the end. But it's an important number and we would never recommend a client consider a project, especially of this complexity with a multi-year phased renovation without a minimum of a 5% contingency.
All permits and all of that type of stuff is separately in here. That doesn't come out of this design contingency or any of that?
Correct. We've got building permits included as a line item. We have site permitting allowances included. We've got state plan approval fees included. We've acknowledged anything where the city said we were going to have, what we know of from the city, we've tried to include here. And then there's also an allowance within soft costs to protect against that again a bit when something goes up or it's a fee that's not established now that they established before we get approval. So we've attempted to predict as best we can as many of those fees and included them here.
Speaking of fees and costs, I want you to address the, it says the general contractor overhead profit fee. And it's 1.3 million. And we've had talk about construction manager. And you've done lots of building projects. I assume some with construction managers and some without. In your experience, do those construction managers earn their fee?
There's going to be a fee some way or another. There's no way to avoid that number if we were to hard bid this project. You're not going to see the number. You're going to see a lump sum total of what the bid is. But some version of those numbers that you see here are in that total number.
You mean, everybody tries to figure in profit in their number?
Absolutely.
Really? Okay. So the other question that I had, on the issue of this fixed cost, can you talk about the economies of scale with regard to how folks might be calculating these numbers in their head and so forth? If we just take the square footage and divide by, you know, 200 square feet per student, which is, you know, kind of the goal and so forth, can't we just take and hack off 10 classrooms or 15 classrooms? And then that will save us 4.2 million dollars because of the square foot cost?
Yeah, I think going back, and Bruce made a very astute observation that we often spend hours trying to help clients understand that we can really look at some of these small dollar amounts and concentrate on them and reduce some cost. But unless you look at square footage, you're not going to make huge leaps or huge reductions in cost because the majority of these costs, as you can see, do correlate to square footage at this point. When we're in detailed design, talking about the type of glass in a window or the type of finish on a floor, very detailed discussions, then you can save some dollars that way too. At this level, really difficult to quantify those because there's just not enough detail there. I think the key as a group, and it's difficult, is going to be to decide when you've cut too much and how do you know that? It's a feel thing and I bet you, you've got different opinions at every single board member. Some will say, you should cut a lot, others will say, leave it as is. It's a very challenging discussion.
Well, the elephant in the room, I think that some people are thinking about is, you're proposing doing it two-level right away. What if we didn't do that second level right away on either both the middle school and the high school? What does that, quote, save us short-term? And then what does it cost us long-term if we end up doing them anyway five years from now?
So when we initially looked at this, we worked, talked to a structural engineer. Conceptually, what would he suggest? We budget for a first, a single story with a future ability of roughly the size to accommodate an addition in the future? He said 200-ish thousand dollars. He would recommend in the base project for enhanced footings, making your roof pre-cast concrete, pouring the topping on it, tapered insulation. It's a bit, it's an estimate, it's a bit of a guess. And he's been at this 40 years, I trust that as a frame of reference. So he said base cost about 200,000 in a project that you may or you may not ever need. If you don't do it, it's 200 you didn't need to spend. If you do it, it's, in theory, that project should cost that much less in the future. I think then it's a direct correlation of square footage. We'd have to do the analysis here. Another way to look at it is to say, build two stories now, but take classrooms off of that two-story option. I would personally say if the goal is to reduce classrooms or to reduce cost, a safer solution may be, for example, to take these corner classrooms, one up, one down, these two corner classrooms, one up, one down, as an example, and lose four classrooms that way. Those are much cleaner additions to put on. You could put on two two-story classroom additions in the future if you needed to, for example. Versus in a summer, taking a roof off of a building when you've got finished classroom spaces below and then build on top of it. Doable, not overly easy. So I would say if the goal and the strategy from the direction from the board is either target a number or target a reduction of specific program areas, between now and the next meeting, we would come back with suggestions on what we think are the most cost-effective ways to meet your goal and would least impact program.
Well, I guess, bottom line for me is all about being for our buck. If that increment between finishing the second floor and the first floor only increases the per-square-footage cost minimally or saves us money, you know, in the long run, I want to do what's most cost-effective for the taxpayer.
I do think you're better off, in the long run, building a two-story classroom addition that has the ability to expand from a two-story base concept than you are building a single story and adding a second in the future. than you are building a single story and adding a second in the future.
If we're going to talk about giving up space, though, I'd love to have that discussion balanced by a discussion from PEG or with PEG. What are we giving up from an education perspective?
Well, along those questions, because we talked about how this renovation is significant because we're increasing classrooms. We heard from the students and we've heard from teachers before about classrooms are just too small for the Project Lead the Way and just on down the line for the programs that we want to be most proud of, the academies and so forth. So how many classrooms are we losing in the major renovation? And so that we know how many we got to get, but just get back to net zero, okay?
We do not have that analysis, I don't believe, PEG, if you, I don't believe we have that. We will do that for you in advance of the next meeting.
All right.
You know, I do think, though, that the conversation is a little more, potentially, more complex than that. Because as we move more and more towards HSD, you know, 2025, you talk about 21st century education, the space requirements change. You know, a classroom yesterday is not a classroom tomorrow. And so there's that input that I think, you know, whether it's PEG or just the overall group, giving up a classroom is just isn't that easy. And I'd love the board to keep that in mind as we're having these discussions.
I just have one more.
Yes.
So I have this clear in my head. The design-construction contingency of 3.4 million. Can I assume that that type of figure in a budget is expected not to be spent? That is not something we are planning on spending, right? Unless there is some kind of thing comes up in this process that is totally unexpected. So it's in the budget, but it's not money we're going to spend if we don't have to spend it.
Correct. And in our experience, I think you should anticipate spending 2% to 3% of that amount. That would be generally what we've seen when we track change orders closely, about 2% to 3%. We would say you should expect to expend that. But it's critically important that we maintain those dollars as a safeguard.
Well, I'm thinking positive. Not one thing is going to go wrong.
It's happened.
It's all going to be daisies and, you know, sunshine.
All great soils and everything. Yep.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I was thinking of that figure correctly.
I do think to that point, though, you know, opposed, as opposed to taking those contingencies out or trying to strip this thing down, to bond for the appropriate number and aim to come in underneath, that does good for our taxpayers. But to bond too low and then have to start to cut curriculum or student educational needs really doesn't seem to make sense either. So, you know, just as a board, again, something I think we want to take into consideration along with all of the other information we've received from the entire process of the community engagement, the survey results that we have. I think a lot of that information provides us really good go-forward plans.
All right. So with these numbers, we're talking about roughly, the construction number 67.6, and then all these soft costs are based off of that figure. And of that 67.6, over $22 million would just be for the proposed addition, correct?
Let me get to that page. It is, sorry, where did you find that number? Yep, correct. It's on the bottom of page three. It would be 22.4 for the addition. Plus, we have to carry the multipliers related to construction which appear on the bottom of page eight. And arguably, some portion of the site budget. Good point, Mike. Yep.
So roughly, of that 67.6 number, how much is for the new construction? I just want to get.
Twenty...
Twenty-five?
Five. Twenty-four, twenty-five. Yep.
Okay. And then by my math, from the Newglers' school system, that would leave us with roughly 22, 23 mil, or, I'm sorry, 42 to 43 million is for the major to minor renovation, depending on which part of the building we're at. But that 42 to 44 million also includes all these infrastructure upgrades on 50-year-old infrastructure and 40-year-old infrastructure, depending on which part of the building you're in.
It includes both infrastructure and educational enhancements, which I think is a critical other component of that. We're not just replacing old, and I know you weren't asserting this, but I think the other piece of that is we have to make sure we're clear that it's not just replacing old stuff. It's also, it's doing that and enhancing the educational environment in both a 21st-century manner and just a general aesthetic and finished manner.
Doing something that we haven't had in 25 years, and that is a cohesively-designed high school. We don't have that right now. We have two conglomerations of buildings that were stuck together. And we've been educating our kids based on that up to this point. Right?
Will you say that again? Did you say 40, 42 to 44 million?
Right. 67.5 minus, and I'm going to use a between number. You said between 23 and 20, 24 and 25 million. So 24.5 from 67, that leaves you 43 million.
43 million would do the improvements, remodeling, the updating. That would not include the addition, but it would do everything.
We take 43, and then we take 5 million of site out as well. So it's really closer to probably 38 million or so.
More like 38 million. All right. Thank you. I forgot that site improvement number is bigger than what we were initially anticipating.
And I will try to bring a more interactive spreadsheet next time, which I will probably regret saying next time when I try to use it in front of you. But I will, I think it'd be valuable if you want to kind of play with some numbers just to see and get a sense. I'd be happy to try to do that with you.
38 million would do the improvements to the existing structure without any addition. It would do all the stuff we need to do. The windows, the roofs, the HVAC, all of that.
Envelope, adding natural light.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't have enough classrooms. I think that's the key.
Right, right.
And so.
No, I'm not suggesting that we do that. I'm just wanting to get that number in my head. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And as we message this moving forward, if the board elects to proceed with something like this, it's going to be important that we break this down into subcomponents that we can communicate better exactly where those dollars are, not just a big number.
And you're working on these numbers with Tim, I presume, and Brian to come up with the anticipated, you know, financing that's going to be included here. And Brian, you were saying earlier, if we were to lock in at today's rates, for instance, which we can't do, but let's say they were similar when, and if the referendum passed, for every 10 million that we would be bonding for, we would be saving 1.3 million right out of the gates?
In interest cost over 20 years.
Over 20 years. Okay. All right.
And the mill rates you cited were not based on that. They were based on your planning interest rates, not the current rate, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions of board members, then? And regarding the report, if not, then just next steps. We've been talking about things that we want to see. We've already mentioned the athletic fields. See how that could be possibly phased and based on your recommendations of what we do short-term versus do at a later date. Yes?
Yeah, just on that phasing, I think it would be good to understand. You were saying that for that section that you were talking about, for the turf, that that would be potential benefit to do the wastewater, you know, storm water treatment area. So if we didn't do the turf, what your cost would be? And then what it would cost to come back at a later time and add that?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll, we'll try to quantify it. It's a little tough, but we'll do our best. We'll work this.
Yeah, because you're going to have a cost of doing nothing there, right?
We have the cost in the base project as budgeted now with doing a fair amount of your low-grade storm water detention, which we're going to need to do onsite. We, naturally, it's not drawn, but we would put it where the field wants to go, even if it's not there in Phase 1. We would just plant natural grass over the top of it that you would have to strip and remove and put gravel and.
Yeah, I guess all I'm trying to understand is what would the benefit be to do it all at the same time versus not to do it at the same time? And so, not trying to get too complex, just something there that would show that for us to help make a better decision.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Question on the stormwater retention. What event are we retaining stormwater for?
25-year.
And currently, we're doing?
You're just letting it go. The other option, and this is, and again, I don't ever want to make this about the school district versus the city. The other option, and the much-preferred option for us, would be to engage the city in partnership if they have the ability to, where the school district invests in expanding the current regional stormwater pond off-site. There is a stormwater pond behind the church. If the city would let us, we would much prefer to expand that pond to handle our water coming to it than do it below grade. We have to factor worst-case scenario, which is here. But we do think it's in the district's best interest. If we can reach partnership with the city, that would be the preferred way to handle stormwater. It would. We think. We still have to pipe it there. So I should, I should never say yes so unequivocally.
He'll check. That is less money.
This is why you want these meetings to go late, because I start saying stuff like that.
Less money until they tell you you have to do 100. You have flood problem, right?
We will have to increase the size of our pipes to convey the water to that location. They'll potentially be bigger because we have to get more water there. But storing water in an open pond is always more economical than burying pipes below the ground to try to do the same thing.
And we couldn't comply with the 20% green space if that was included in the green space?
I think it would help. I don't know if you'd own the pond or not. That's the other piece. They own it. You may have to pay maintenance on it. There's a fair amount of engagement and agreement that would have to happen there. Which is, I was a little nervous.
We didn't get into that discussion with the city, so, as Matt said.
All right. So we've got some work to do on that. But, I don't know, if people want to keep talking.
Worst case is planned in here, though.
Right. Worst case is planned in.
And I don't know that we won't, I can say, but we will never get the city to agreement before you, as a board, would decide to do this anyway. So I think we would recommend keeping the worst case in. And if not, it's a win for the project and for the community.
Obviously, a lot of the non-athletic field discussion has been focused on the high school. And so, but I want to also talk about the middle school. And, but I want to get further comments on the high school part before we move to the middle school. Generally, about this plan, the building, you know, the proposed, you know, the pots of money that comprise, you know, the number that we're talking about here, you know, how it breaks down with addition, the site improvement, which sounds like we're not going to, we might be able to make something, but somewhere, that's only 5.3 million. But then the upgrades of the 38. What's the general consensus of the board direction? What other questions do you want to have regarding that? We had the one question about possibly not doing the second story and what that does, or taking off the corner classrooms. But beyond that, does anybody else want to see any other things looked at for the high school?
I'll just tell you about a phone call I got today that suggested strongly that you separate all these things out in a referendum. They actually suggested a separate question for the high school, a separate question for the middle school work, for the auditorium work, and for the athletic fields. Four questions. I have no idea if that's ever done on a referendum, but this person said he'd been out there talking to some people in the community and they, he thinks that's the best way for us to be able to get something done. He's real concerned if we go in one package, it's going to be such a large amount, they're going to say no. But if you break it down, it might be a more palatable amount of money. And it's just a suggestion. He asked me to share it with you.
Yeah. I think that's a good thing for us to be talking about. Well, we didn't talk about the middle school. So maybe before we get to how many questions we have, let's just talk a little bit about the middle school. Because, again, you've got a two-story concept, but it's two houses. You can't really just take off corner rooms and still have a complete house on one level.
The middle school's tougher to do that with, I would agree. That's, that would be a more appropriate, I think, vertical phased scenario than it would be a remove-a-classroom scenario.
All right. But we're talking about adding a gym and two houses. And then I also noticed the renovation part doubled in square footage. Why was that?
We picked, doubled from the last time we did this.
What the range was earlier.
The range had a single-story addition, so we would have only had renovation on the first floor. So it directly correlates to that additional two connections needed on the second floor.
So we, yeah, because then September 29th, when we reduced these to three options, we had a 27,000-square-foot addition at the middle school and 2,150 of renovation. It hasn't been totally doubled because you had the gym. And so we were only doubling the classroom part of it to get to the, what, what is it, 45,000?
Correct. Roughly. Yep. That's a correct statement.
But that is the number of all this about, back to integrity, keep our promises and everything. This is the one number that's outside the range, the 9.6 at the middle school.
Correct.
And let's have that discussion now about one-story, two-story, one-house, two-house. There was another thought somebody had. I can't remember who it was, whether it was a community member or whatever, but about converting, if we're going to add gym space, then we don't need to use that multipurpose room as a carpeted basketball floor, which I used to coach on when my daughter was in third grade. But if we converted that to a house, four classrooms roughly, could we get four or five out of that multipurpose rooms, roughly?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that would all be considered, you know. So the thing would be is if we did the two-story addition, that would give us two houses. If we transformed what we were doing in Merlin House, which is already set up as a house concept, but just happens to house all of our special needs programming for the building, then what we could do is reprogram that multipurpose room space or some other space in that building so that we could, you know, disperse those programs throughout the building. So, yeah, I mean, whether it turns into the house, another house, or it turns into, you know, other classroom spaces. The big key is, without the second story, trying to get to the third house is hard. You know, we end up with either one or two houses, and the big thing right now is.
So then we have three grades, some with two houses and some with three houses.
Oh, we would have three grades.
I mean, three or four.
Some, yeah. Two of them would have three houses and one of them would have, or two of them would have four houses and one of them would have three houses. And so, again, it doesn't, it doesn't totally solve our problem. And I think the thing that's interesting about this is, I guess what I would ask Matt is, it's about a $2 million difference to add that house. If we waited, I mean, are we, you know, I think my biggest concern on some of these would be the fact that we're seeing the cost of these continue to climb every year that we're waiting on some of these things. We know we have the need right now. If we waited to add that second story, can we add the second story as cheaply as we can, as we can build it new now?
No, you can't.
I mean, do we have any idea the difference?
Yeah, I, you have to, you have to take the roof back off. We have to remove insulation. Sometimes you can reuse that roof. Usually you can't.
That would cost more than 2 million, then, to add that. The 2 million we saved by not doing two-story now would be.
Even just mobilizing a contractor and incurring general conditions to do a single-story addition on top of existing space, we'd have temporary protection we'd have to be offering for that space. So I don't know what the premium is. If I was put on the spot, I'd say it's probably a 15% to 20% premium, depending on how far out you wait to do that.
And by the way, it's a small addition compared to what we're doing, so that's going to add to that premium, I would suggest. Jamie, you made a comment on the multipurpose space. I, for those of you who have kids in the district who do any kind of athletics, any kind of athletic space in this district is at such a premium. And it's such a blessing to have the discussions around adding gym space. I think to even mention or suggest that we would get rid of even this carpeted multipurpose room, I think we'd be doing a huge disservice to our community. Just my two cents.
Right. And just be clear, that's not just used as a gym for some purposes. It's also used as their place where they do mini concerts and so forth, so.
Correct. And it doesn't necessarily have to be just a multipurpose space. You know, the library is right now a two-story, open-air space. I mean, could there technically be a story put above that, you know, inside that envelope instead of the multipurpose space? Because right now, it's just open space. I mean, there's a variety of ways we could use it. But I think without getting that second story, it's really going to limit our ability to make those adjustments.
You know, there was some, if I remember correctly, there was some discussion around, at the middle school, converting the media center to something different, just because books aren't as common anymore. Is there potential for doing anything different with the media center in that space?
Getting rid of our library.
Well, doing something a little bit different, because the way kids learn today, they're not necessarily using books. They're going to their one-to-one device, online books, those things. Does the media center need necessarily be as large? Is that space usable and still maintain the level of education that we need for our kids?
Well, you know, and I think it's more than just the media center. It's looking at fixed computer lab spaces, both at the middle school and high school. As you roll out a one-to-one initiative, the need to continue to have those fixed computer lab spaces may start to subside, which then we can reutilize those rooms for other things. And a lot of those programming discussions, we're going to have to have as we look for alternative spaces if we tend to relocate those programs that are in Merlin House right now. So.
And I'd say, there's definitely potential. It's going to be difficult to ever recreate a house concept as we remodel some of these. But you're right on. I mean, there's a way to repurpose and look at that media center and provide an innovative collaborative learning environment that focuses as much on technology and collaboration as it does books and reading. It does both, and maybe even capture some square footage for things. But my fear would be it's tough to create a house out of it, obviously, because that would eliminate it completely.
But we may be able to, if we did put a second story inside the media center, create four or five classrooms, which would then, maybe it's not a house concept, but it maybe would take some of that programming that we currently have in Merlin. Not necessarily that all of those classes would go there, but maybe some, you know, those programs would be dispersed throughout the building. And some of those other programs that are displaced by those programs could go in those spaces as well. And so it's a, it's a shift that we haven't started having that conversation yet at the middle school, obviously, and be very pivotal in having that discussion. But what this addition does is it provides us a tremendous amount of flexibility to have those discussions.
And, great question, Rob. And I didn't mean to put, I wasn't putting a negative spin on it. I was just making, getting clarification on what you were asking. I am going to ask a question that has a negative spin, though, and that is, again, going back is what we're hearing, you know, from certain people. It wasn't necessarily on the survey, because the survey put very high priority on getting more space at middle school, which I totally understand. That building has been above stated capacity since my kids were there. And they haven't been there in eight years. So what about just, if we've done with, we've gotten by with being overcapacity at the middle school for eight or nine years, and we're doing fine with having 13 teachers on carts and using classrooms at Hudson Prairie, what's another five, six years until, you know, that bubble goes through? Let's talk about that a little bit. Is that, just add the gym and forget about adding any classroom space and just continuing for another six years with what we've been, our current program, or using more space at Hudson Prairie? Is it even available? I don't know.
Jamie, why are you bringing that question up? I'm inclined to ask.
I'm getting, I want to get the people's feedback. Is that something that, you want to follow, stick with the survey? Or do you want to go off-survey and say, "This isn't as higher priority as the high school," or whatever? go off survey and say this isn't as higher priority as the high school or whatever?
I felt like what I was hearing tonight from the community and, you know, at Willow too, and from the survey was a flag to go ahead and not be called upon again in a, you know, another year or two for another referendum and for further money to, you know, accomplish these goals. I was kind of excited about the idea that we could get the teachers off the carts and get the two new houses. And it seems to me, I can't remember what open session it was, but there was such positive feedback for the house concept, and I would think we would want to, I'm inclined to just get the addition in there. And, you know, I feel like we'd be responding to what the citizens have been saying.
I agree with Sue. I mean, I think that to ignore the months and months of work that our community volunteers and the PST committee and the work of the survey put into asking the community, what is your tax tolerance? What problems do you want to solve? What are your priorities? I don't think we can ignore that and go and walk from the results of that survey.
I think that the, I think there has to be a separate question on the referendum. Leave the addition in, that's what we said we were going to do, that's what they approved in the survey, or that's what they had to respond to in the survey. So, just make it a separate question. If the community wants to support the high school and what we're going to do to the middle school, they'll answer yes to both questions. I, I know what you're saying though, because I've received the same calls you've probably received about, why can't we just, you only got four years of, of prouting in that middle school yet before it starts to subside, and that's true, according to the demogra, the demographics. Why can't we just use more rooms out of Prairie Elementary because we have all this extra space at the grade school level? And use more rooms for the next four years, and then it'll start to subside and the problem won't be as severe anymore.
That's, that's definitely a suggestion, Sandy, as far as put in a separate question, because if the survey sentiments are going to follow through and be accurate, then it's going to, it should pass because it's something that was seen as a priority.
Make it a separate question, leave it in like that.
We're not deciding here tonight necessarily how many questions there will be, but this is some, giving the administration some guidance so that we're prepared for January 12th. And so, with that, if folks say it makes sense to eliminate...
They'll vote yes if they want to.
I mean, a one-floor addition, which was basically what was on the survey at 27,000 square feet, including the gym, did not eliminate our teachers on carts. But this two-story addition would basically eliminate our teachers on carts.
With some of those adjustments.
With using Hudson Prairie for a few other classrooms.
Or utilizing some space, other spaces within the middle school, yeah. I mean, it's...
So, so a couple of questions there. And it's a good discussion, good debate. Couple, couple of thoughts. If you have 3.85 right now in a fund balance, right, where does that fund balance get applied? High school or middle, middle school referendum? Or athletics or auditorium?
Like, you know, I think that's, you know, that's the challenge that you guys would have to decide. I mean, if you combine the middle school and high school question, somewhat of what Matt has proposed at 87 and a half million, you could say, well, we could apply 3 and a half million of that fund balance, given, because we have some other things that are going on with parts of it. But 3 and a half million of that fund balance, so it could get your, that question down to 84. You could say, okay, we want to split that in half or use a percentage of it to each. But, you know, I think the, depending on what target you're trying to hit, Bruce, I mean, it's just, yeah, you're going to have to decide, well, we're going to buy down the middle school by 500,000 on their referendum and the high school 3 million because of the ratio.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I think I personally would rather attack education at our middle and high schools, which is what the PST went to tackle. And if we break these up into two separate questions, again, which I think it's a good open dialogue for our group, hypothetically, let's say that the middle school passes because people are like, nah, it's 9 million bucks, 10 million bucks, yeah, I'll pass that. But I'm not going to pass the high school. So now we've maybe passed the middle school, and we still haven't addressed our high school, and we have to go back as a board and figure out what we're going to do with the high school, you know? And it just would create, I think, more division in the community when we're trying to unite a compromise. And I think that's been a pretty good discussion amongst many of our community members to try and get to some compromise. So, to start to break this down, and even into four questions, I think, to me, it's hard to separate and say that athletics is more in part important than the arts, than an auditorium, or vice versa, right? So, you know, people, I think, if they're going to support athletics and the auditorium, they're going to support it, or they're not going to support it. And we got information in, in the survey on that. And you start to break this thing down into more finite questions, I think it creates more confusion than anything in our community. So, I'm a little hesitant about that. It's, you know, we're, we're not making that decision tonight, but I think we could create more division and potentially be in for a lot more work and potentially more cost for our district.
Right. I'm going to get away from the negative devil's advocate stuff and go back to the survey, which is, I think, what we should stick with. And the survey did have those combined, the middle school and the high school. The auditorium and the, and the ballfields were separated out. They didn't do so well. The auditorium actually did a little bit better than the upscale, call it the upscaled version of the athletic fields. But we've already given direction to come back with something smaller, and I would be inclined to combine a smaller scale athletic proposal, whether that's even just, you know, putting synthetic turf at the high school and auditorium, whatever that's, whatever that is, and we can talk about that at the next meeting, but putting that in a separate question, because that's one of the comments, of the comments, it's kind of interesting, I went back to the last referendum, and we didn't use school perceptions, we just did it with the school. But as far as the narrative comments, see, almost the same, and in the same proportion, you know, and they want academics first. I mean, that's the thing, is we want to get the schools improved. And then the other stuff, the programming, it's important, but it's something that it's going to rise or fall on its own separate question. If it doesn't pass the first time, you know, and there's still a community groundswell wants to see it pass, then we do it again. Obviously, it's going to cost more to do it later. We've seen other school districts do it. You worked at Sun Prairie. They did 93 million, and then a $3 million pool, the $3, $3 million pool lost, the 93 million in academics passed, but then a year or two later, they came back and then they passed the swimming pool, but it cost 4 million when they did it the second time. So, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm just, that's my observation, is I'm, I would be leaning in that direction of going in one question that still stays awful close or below that 85 million dollar tolerance that we had on the survey.
I would, I would concur with that. You know, I think the, the big issues historically compared to where we're at today, the, the public has said, you know, historically, you know, you're, you're not listening to us. I think we've gone, you know, leap years beyond where we were from a listening perspective. They've said, we want something centrally located. They've said, please reinvest in our existing infrastructure. There's a variety of other things that have been said. I think this addresses that, and the survey would indicate as such. You know, I would be a proponent of a single academic question, and then a second question that would combine the athletics at a reduced rate as well as something for the auditorium. I think, I think that goes to simplifying the, the questions at hand. I think it also goes towards addressing, you know, many of the, the wants and desires, the needs of our community.
I'm in, I'm really supportive of every word you said, Bruce, and the way you said it. So I'm on the same page with you. Now, I know we don't have cameras anymore that you have to focus, but what we've been doing with the engagement process is focusing, you know, you go from one side to the other, back and forth until you have sharp resolution. And I think tonight, you know, the speakers gave us amazing support and compliments on the transparency and the process. And I think we're, I think we have very crisp resolution right now. And it, it's better to, I mean, ask a reasonable figure, but it's better to ask exactly what you want, so we're not, you know, coming back again and again. And I, I know in some other aspects of the survey, we found that our community really is ready to tolerate a pretty good-sized number. But if we, you know, fracture it with this decision and that decision and that decision, then I think we just put ourselves in a great big huge hole.
All right. Yeah, very, well said, Sue. I just, what caution, one thing as far as, I mean, the speakers tonight were great. I'm not discounting that at all. But what I want to caution is that, again, their voices, I look at what the message they're saying as opposed to the number of speakers or anything, and even what they're saying, I'm not giving that more credence than the survey. Because as we saw in the comments, if people just put all their comments in exclamation, in exclamation points afterwards, in bold capital letters, do I value that comment more because that person felt really adamant about it? No, you got to look at the numbers. And that's the one thing, going back to the survey and looking at our previous survey, which was just a school district run. I mean, not to downgrade it too much, because it was similar in depth and did demographics and tested different options, but that survey was three-quarters parents and only one-quarter non-parents. It was 25%, I think, or 30% staff, and only 70% non-staff. Whereas this survey was 90% non-staff. It was almost 50/50 between people that had a connection to the district and people who don't. And we had more than double the respondents. And so, I think, getting back to, again, the survey, we got to stick with the, what the tolerances were there and what the priorities are. Again, getting back to the priorities all along. I mean, these people that talk about how much value have you put on the buildings and utilizing the buildings to their utmost, and you've got 237 extra, you know, spaces in our school district, well, that's combining K, the elementary with the secondary. We're focused on a secondary space problem. For anybody to suggest that we can solve our problem at the high school by putting kids in our grade schools, we're not going to put, that's the days of having K through 12 in a single classroom. My dad did that for his first eight years of his education, that was in the 40s, 1940s and early 50s. We don't do that anymore. This is 21st century learning. We're not going to solve our secondary spaces, issues by putting them in grade school classrooms, certainly not for long-term. We've been getting by doing that at the middle school. It's not going to work for high school or anything else. So, we're ready to kind of move forward, just a question of any more direction for administration or Bray?
I guess one of the things that I'd like to look at is, if we are looking at the athletic fields, and I'm going to discuss that further, can we look at locating that building, that houses, that infrastructure with the restrooms and the concessions and the storage in the actual building? Can we get the athletic fields close enough to the building where that's part of the building? So you don't have a million five in additional offsite costs? Maybe it's not possible, I don't know.
No other guidance or direction for me, James. There may have been some questions that we didn't get to address tonight that people had written in. I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to provide any feedback on the site or anything like that. So, I just want to make sure that we do address those questions for those community members that took the time to come out tonight and, and actually...
I think we did address all the ones that were here tonight.
Okay.
Just, just so I'm clear on what our charge is, just to kind of recap. So, what, what I'm hearing you say is, look, it's multiple options for the athletic fields and how we could look at different costs there. As far as the scope of the middle school project, it's more of the board trying to decide, do they want to run it as a separate question or a combined question with the high school? But I, I just want to make sure, you know, I'm, I'm hearing you. And that, is the scope of the high school project that we're talking about, I mean, is it within what the board is thinking? Or, I just, I just want to be clear, so we don't come back and you guys say, well, you totally forgot to, to address this part of the...
I think we're still debating as a board, we've got one or two questions on the academics, you know, so any help there is great. From my perspective, I think the dollars that we're talking about for the high school, I think are aligned with everything we've been talking about, I think. And from an athletics standpoint, definitely, I think we need to look at options.
Everybody else?
Did, did you also want to have discussions with the principals to, to talk about specific curricular alignments and classroom configurations, or was that something for later?
Yeah, that has happened at the high school extensively, and we definitely can do that with the middle school in advance of the next meeting.
And I, I also thought that we had maybe said, given the survey results, that, that separating the middle school and high school question was not an option. I, I understand maybe why it could be, but I think we can confuse the issue quite a bit, and especially when we're talking about the general population, not to, not to undermine their understanding of the situation, but when we talk about the house concepts and, you know, maybe realigning Merlin House, and I think we'd be getting into specifics that we'd lose them. And, and not having a child go through the middle school myself, it's, it's a bit foreign.
No, I, I get that. I, I just meant from a scope of the actual project, do you feel comfortable with the scope of the two projects? Whether you guys, whatever you guys decide you want to do question-wise, do you feel comfortable with the scope of the projects?
I, I do. I don't, I don't think it makes sense to come back and do a second story later. I think, you know, we're following the guidance of the, of the survey. I think we're planning appropriately. I think we have a fair amount of contingencies in here, and, you know, I think we need to bond appropriately here for us to, to follow the, the guidance that we've been given.
Well, I'd take exception with just one thing, it was, there was the question about the corner classrooms on the two-story addition. Taking, you know, one off of each corner, which is essentially four classrooms, I want to know what the impact of the capacity is between now and our next meeting. And how much does that save us? Again, we're talking 2 million dollars like at the middle school. We're 2 million over roughly what we told the community where we'd be at. That still is the impact according to Brian, you know, $5 on the average house, you know, as far as getting it done and saving millions later trying to add it by taking off a roof and, and add it. So, I do want to just see what that incremental cost savings and what impact it has on capacity.
We can sure look at that. I, I do notice your nu, nuclearis math is focusing on the one that's over. The auditorium's under the survey amount. Just let's...
Just a quick question. So, if we go to referendum and we have the referendum pass at X dollars and the construction costs, we don't need our $3 million of contingency, how does that work?
And that's, that'd be a good question for Brian, and he can talk through that.
So, there's only two things you can do with the, the referendum dollars. So, hypothetically, let's say you borrowed all of it by then, by the time you knew that you didn't need the 3 million. The only way, it's, it's either referendum-eligible projects or use it to pay down the debt. So, but in this phasing process, potentially, we would know, you know, at least a, you know, a closer time period that you might be on track for being under, so we may not ever actually borrow it.
Plus, we wouldn't have to touch the 3.5 million we already have in the cap.
That'd be another way we could, you know, use that money last, you know? So, so there's a variety of ways we can get there. But the clear answer is that if someone asks, there's only really two things you can do. It's referendum-eligible projects or paying down the debt once it was borrowed.
Or, or not borrow it.
Or, right, or not borrow it.
So, so essentially, if we get, you know, that last round is like the last 5 million or 10 million in bonds, and we happen to be on target, we could just not sell that round of bonds, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, direction? I know we've been here a long time, I want to thank everyone for their patience and thank our experts up here for coming a long ways. And do you guys feel that you have direction now? Is there any, anything more? I want to, we didn't ask the guy over here, the engineer, I mean. And, and I just want to say...
We're not starting it now, James.
Well, I, can we say congratulations? Congratulations in getting that number down to 6.5 million, because that number was like three times that, or two, two and a half times that when, you know, when we looked at this three years ago.
Yeah, I, and, and this is not a shot at ATS R. I still don't know what they all had included in that number. I, we haven't, we've looked at it multiple times. My guess is they had electrical costs, plumbing costs, general construction costs, which we have just separated into different pots of dollars. I'm guessing they had that in there, because I, I don't know how they would have got to such a large number. I'm guessing they had that in there, because I, I don't know how they would have got to such a large number if they weren't putting things beyond HVAC in it.
All right. Next meeting is January 12th, it's a regular meeting. Right. No, no Christmas meetings, no New Years. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and I'll entertain a motion to go into formal session to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're back in formal session, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn.
Bruce is first, you're the second, and all in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned and Merry Christmas.